I call the special study session meeting of the Deer Valley Governing Board to order on October 17th at 7:00 PM. Let the record show there are three board members present. Ms. Ordway is online and Ms. Paperman will not be with us this evening. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to amend the agenda to move item 3E up to underneath 3A, I'm sorry, just for continuity's sake since they're both bus-related topics.
Do I have a second?
Okay, I'm sorry, can we do that?
The motion is to move item 3E, I'm sorry, up under 3A so that we can talk about buses all at the same time.
A second.
I don't know if you had a second, but I'll third it.
She says if we don't have a second, she'll third it.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and if I could ask for, I think if you guys would talk a little bit more into the microphone, I could hear you.
I think is what she said. Okay, District Report, so a multi-tiered system of support.
Okay, good evening, Vice President Fisher, members of the Board, Dr. Finch. We are pleased to be here with you this evening for our study session to provide a Futures MTSSB update. You will recall earlier in the year, we provided a fairly robust and comprehensive Futures for all aspects of where we have made progress. In that particular report, we did highlight what we were planning to do for MTSSB. And so what we are so pleased to show you here today is what we have actually done over the past quarter. And you will see there has been much progress and there's much to celebrate as we go through our slides. We will also show you some areas for growth for us as well as we move through the school year. Okay, in terms of a preview of this report, again, I'd like to ground us in that the work that we do with respect to MTSSB is contained within the Futures report. And that report was done five and a half years ago. We've gone into that at length before, so there's no need to, again, other than to say that it was highlighted that the systems, establishment and refinements for MTSSB is something that the district had an opportunity on. And so we have made action steps for that for the past year and a half. And again, quite pleased to be here with you this evening. We have six clear goals that we have made for our district this school year. Those six goals are there. You can see our first one is to reduce exclusionary practices. Mrs. Tucker, she will speak more to that later on in the presentation. We also want to increase our sense of belonging for students and also climate data. And we measure that through our student survey data at our campuses, 3rd grade through 12th grade. We also want to improve attendance. And then it's called the Behavior Integration Assessment, and that's a fancy way of saying how well do the students and staff at our campuses know what the behavior expectations are at the school? And how do you earn recognition or how do you get recognized when you do indeed display those behaviors? And then our final one is the Teacher Perception and Student Behavior. And that particular goal is measured by our survey that we do on an annual basis. And there is a question on how well students are behaved in our schools. So those are our six goals. We do have a slide that illustrates these, and so you'll see those in a moment. But that is what you are going to see over the course of this report, is what steps we have taken on each of these six goals. Okay, this slide here shows three particular quotes from the Futures report, which again speak to the need for MTSS systems, for consistent systems at our schools. And so that is what we have taken action on. They also have combined to help us with the Portrait of a Graduate. Again, this is not new to you, you have seen this before. But you can see that much of what we strive to do for MTSSB work is contained in this Portrait of a Graduate. In some respects, you will see that it's more on the MTSSB than it is on the MTSSA. This slide contains some additional reasons, if you will, why it's important that we do ensure that our systems are strong and that we continue to refine them. Much of this should not be new to you or to anyone that might be watching in. It is well-known that post-COVID, there have been quite a few shifts with student behavior across the nation. In this slide, you can see some statistics from the National Center for Education Statistics showing the increase, the uptick, if you will, in behaviors that have occurred at schools. And it has not been a small increase, they have been significant increases across the schools, as well as chronic absenteeism. And then, of course, we have anecdotally, we know from our own data that this is something that was very much needed in our system. And so that is why we have placed such an emphasis on it over the past year and a half. And will continue to do so for the years that are to come. Tony, I think it's you?
Yep. And good evening. And these goals all align to our strategic priorities, where we are now in the first of a five-year strategic priority cycle. And they kind of cut across all four areas, but especially with excellence in student learning. And then they all relate to our six district-wide MTSSB goals, or the six buckets, as we refer to them as. And we are going to be going through primarily four of these buckets that we're going to look at today. And we've also invited three of our administrators who have helped to lead the charge on MTSSB over the last year and a half or so. And they have great progress to report on their campuses as well. So these are goals that we're monitoring throughout the year, using some of the data you will see.
Good evening. So what Behavior Solutions provides us is a very clear path as to how we meet our MTSSB goals. And so what's on this slide is at Tier One, what are some steps that we can take at the campus level? But you'll also see that we've mimicked these steps at the district level as well, just to model for schools. We're all learning by doing in this process when it comes to behavior. So what that looks like is establishing a really strong leadership team that's looking at school-wide prevention and behavior, really clear standards for what we expect when we're talking about academic and social studies. The role of the teacher teams in the process, how do we build their capacity and skills in first best classroom management so that they're able to address these behaviors? And then collecting the data that's providing the information we need to make informed decisions when we're talking about student behavior. So you're going to see these four steps specifically throughout this presentation. Again, what we're doing at the district level and at the campus level. So this next slide is just a reflection of our Deer Valley Solutions team at the district level. We have a team that includes Dr. Zerbach, myself as the MTSSB specialist, Tony, our Director of Safety. You can see the names there. But our purpose is to come together on a monthly basis and monitor the health of MTSSB across the district. We look at how our schools are doing and those data points that we discussed earlier. We ensure that every campus has a behavior team and that they have the resources they need to execute this work at the campus level. You're going to see, one of our biggest lifts has been providing professional learning to various groups across the district. And something that we're working on right now is we're noticing an increase in vaping. And so that is something as a team, we're looking at what resources do we have available? And how can we be better in addressing this issue? And you also saw that as a nationwide issue, that's not just specific to here. So we're just always problem-solving, we come together every month to, under this purpose.
And in the scope of some of our work, we will continue this year. We have some, three bullet points here that are the focus of this Behavior Solutions team in addition to ALS moving forward. We know bullying has been a topic of discussion this year. And so we are looking at our bullying policy, we're auditing our campus procedures towards our compliance of reporting and archiving bullying and the investigative process. We're looking at reviewing and refreshing expectations for all administrators that are in compliance with policy JIC-EA. And we also want to look at our Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And that Handbook Committee team will start to meet after the first of the year to look forward to revising our processes and our systems for next year in the mindset of continual improvement and trying to get better at our processes. So we are just tomorrow and Thursday going to be getting an audit of all principals at our level meetings, looking at our policies and making sure we're in alignment and in compliance with what we're looking at moving forward. We also, as we take a more data-informed approach to analyzing behavior data using our systems, we want to ensure consistency in calibrating our understanding of how we log discipline and how we log behavior into power schools, which then does get fed into our Panorama system that allows our teams at the campus level and the district level to identify trends and looking at ways we can prevent and inform our precise problem statements each month moving forward so that we can improve our processes across our system. We also are targeting attendance and looking for ways we can support attendance at all tiers, from Tier One to Tier Three, for those students who are struggling to get to school on time and regularly. So those are three more big buckets that we're going to be working on through this team moving forward this year. As part of this audit and our process as well, we'll be reviewing our Safe Schools Reporting Form, the online form known as Woofoo, which we subscribe to as a district that archives data and allows for 24/7 reporting. In addition to the hard copy District Violence, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Forms that align to JIC that will be, are on file at every campus, we will be reviewing these processes and making sure that parents always have a consistent system to go to, whether that's electronically through our Woofoo system or at any campus with our hard copy of the reporting form. And pointing out that, of course, either way, the report comes in, the principal will be notified, and they or their designee will begin the investigation process, take action, and archive properly.
These next two slides are going to refocus us to the work that we're doing to set campuses up for success in this process. One of the first steps was to provide a common language and system through training, so coming to the table together and hearing the same information, focusing on prevention. So just to give you a feel of what that looks like and sounds like, John and Jessica Hannigan, leaders in this work who wrote Behavior Solutions, constantly throughout the training, asked these questions that if a student is struggling behaviorally, what should we do? And we always come back to, we should identify and teach them the academic or social behaviors that we want them to learn. And so we are constantly coming back to that question and asking ourselves, well, how do we do that? And what resources are available? And making sure that our behavior teams are having those conversations, because every campus has different resources available. And so what does this look like for us? And so that day was super-important and a huge celebration for us to have everybody in the room. The next slide is an example of what campuses have done through this work already and started to really think about what are our essentials here on our campus? And how do we teach those? What does that look like? So I'll use the example of the Falcon Way at Hillcrest Middle School. You can see they spent some time over the summer talking with teachers and other stakeholders, identifying responsibility, respect, and being future-ready. And then really breaking that out into what does that look like by location? And then how do we teach that when students are on campus? And how do we reinforce that when we see students doing the right thing? These are just a couple examples. Every campus across Deer Valley has identified academic and social behaviors they deem essential on their campus and are constantly coming back and teaching these to students. And that's part of the work.
This next slide informs our community and our staff. It's great to talk about this work and to lead off the year with this work, but we also realize we need to measure the impact and monitor the progress through the year. So what you see on this slide here illustrates some of the survey questions that we deliver two times throughout the year with a third checkpoint for most of our campuses mid-year as well that allows us to monitor how our MTSSB systems and our structures are being implemented and transferring to students, most importantly, on every campus. And on our website, as always, there are copies of the questions that all students ask. They are banded for middle grades 3, 5, and then for secondary 6, 12. And these survey questions are available on our website for all to review. There'd be too many to detail today, but we will show a small sampling, as you see, with a particular emphasis in these slides on campus culture and climate and some of the questions that students are asked on the following slides. And then in a moment, you will see some of the success we're having across two of our campuses right now. But on this slide here, we see our survey data. We chose 6, 12 bank of questions and a 3, 5 bank of questions here. And highlighted in yellow, you see these are district-level results. And you can see by question, the percentages that answered favorably of students for each question in the middle column, and then on the far right, you will see the change over time that those questions were asked back in the spring. So we, of course, are looking for growth over time and improving our students' sense of belonging and school climate, the favorable ratings as we go.
And Tony, why don't you explain just a bit about the formula that is used for a favorable response? That can be confusing for folks.
Sure.
And how there's the five responses, et cetera. So why don't you just teach a little bit about that?
Right, so the percentages in the middle there that responded favorably, typically, most questions are, there's five possible answers a student can select. And the top two answers are typically the most favorable. Then there are typically two negative answers that are unfavorable. And then there is typically a kind of middle-of-the-road, kind of a sitting-on-the-fence, neither favorable nor unfavorable response that's in the middle. But since it's not calculated as one of the top two favorable choices, it does tend to skew the results towards unfavorable. So two of the five responses are considered favorable typically, and three of the five are considered unfavorable, although we have trained our staff and especially our administrators and our survey coordinators at each level to actually go in and analyze each question and look how many of those unfavorable responses would likely more be classed as neutral rather than unfavorable? And to take that data with a grain of salt as well. And what I would like to do next is introduce Teresa, Sam, and Darlene, who are administrators who have agreed to come share their success stories here and how our Behavior Solutions work is transferring to kids, which again is the most important part of tonight. So I'm going to first introduce Darlene Baumgartner, the principal at Sonoran Foothills.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to share the progress that we're making so far over the past couple of years. So you'll see here some of the work that we've been doing at Sonoran Foothills. Our language is Trax, so we leave our Trax everywhere we go by being trustworthy, respectful, accountable, creative, kind, and safe. And those are the behaviors that we are focused on with our students. At the top of this slide, you'll notice the outside transitions. This is just a small piece of what we call our Behavior Matrix. The Behavior Matrix includes all areas of campus, and it has clear and identified behavior expectations that we like to see from our Bobcats. A lot of our work recently has been focused on streamlining our matrix, making sure that the language is student-friendly, that it's meaningful, and that we're using it consistently across campus. And we are continuing to do that throughout this year as well. The matrix is what we use for our main teaching of expectations. So in the beginning of the year, our Bobcats participate in what we call a Passport Day, focused on PBIS. And so they travel to different areas on campus with their classroom teachers, and the classroom teachers explicitly teach what's expected in those areas. They do that at the beginning of the year, and then they do it after significant breaks. So after the winter break, we'll do a Passport Day again. And then we noticed a need for additional support in the spring. So this year, after spring break, they'll have a Passport Day with their teachers as well. You'll see towards the left side, the classroom poster. So as we refined our matrix and adjusted our language, now we're working on signage for our campus so that it's visual for students to access wherever they go around campus. So you'll notice posters like this starting to go up in our classrooms, our bathrooms, our cafeteria, our library, and even our hallways. So again, providing that visual not only for students, but so that teachers and support staff can be using the same language across our campus. In the bottom corner...
Go ahead, Darlene.
Okay. Sorry, if I'm going too fast, slow me down. In the bottom corner there, you'll see just a glimpse of our agenda for our, it's our Trax team, but it's our MTSSB committee. So those are the staff members that come together once a month, and we look at our behavior data. We pull that from Panorama, we present it to our staff members, and then we analyze that data to determine where are the needs on our campus. So for example, last month when we pulled our data, we saw a theme amongst office referrals. While we didn't have a significant amount of behaviors, we really wanted to dial in, and most of them had a theme of disrespect. And so the team came together to decide what are some specific attributes and teaching points that we need to do with all of our students, kindergarten through eighth grade, to focus on showing more respectful behavior across our campus. None of that would be useful if we weren't communicating it out clearly, though. So we are intentional about putting it in our weekly bulletin that all of our staff sees so that they know what specific expectations we're focused on reinforcing right now. And then we're also including it in our family bulletin that goes out every Friday, because we remind our Bobcats that we don't just show Trax on our campus, but we show it out in the community as well. And so that's a sample of what you'll see there. When our students are showing those expected behaviors, we're reinforcing it through different classroom systems on campus that the teachers are facilitating, as well as students earn, well, we have little yellow Trax cards. So if someone catches them showing expectations around campus or going above and beyond, we're acknowledging them with the specific language. They get to turn those cards in at the front office, and then we do drawings every week, which they get very excited to hear their names on the announcements, whether they're in kindergarten or in eighth grade. You'd be surprised how excited those seventh and eighth graders come up to the office to pick out a prize. So in addition to that, we hold quarterly Trax meets, where we're recognizing students that are exemplary for showing Trax across our campus. And so we all come together around the flagpole, we restate our expectations again, and then we acknowledge the positive things that are happening in our community.
Darlene, I'm going to put you on the spot a bit, and Teresa, I'll do the same.
Sure.
Okay, so could you talk to the Board some, a bit more about the essential behaviors in terms of how well is the staff embracing the shift? Because for the Board, this is a shift, okay, for us. If you're familiar with PBIS, you will have already seen quite a bit of overlap that's here. But there are some differences in terms of where Behavior Solutions is going. And Jessica, you might want to jump in on two. But Darlene, with respect to Trax, the trustworthy, respectful, et cetera, just as teachers have the academic standards which are provided by the state, how are they making that mental shift that these are really the same? Their behavior standards, right, for us? And we're asking them to unwrap those, to break those apart, just like you might have seen some of the board members at a PLC meeting if they're doing that for academic standards. So could you maybe talk to that just a bit?
Sure. So really, when we looked at our matrix to begin with, we had to determine which of those expectations were necessary and the most meaningful, and, I mean, for lack of a better term, the most bang for your buck, right? In order to support our students. But with that being said, they really use the four PLC questions when they dive into this work focused on behavior. So the very first one, what do we want our students to know? And so that is Tier One. We know that if we're focused on that and we're proactive and preventative, then 80% or more of our students should be responding positively to these Tier One preventions that we have in place. And then eventually, we'll get into additional layers of what do we do if they're not responding and they don't know? So how are we providing Tier Two interventions for those students that need additional supports or opportunities to learn the expectations? But our goal really is, it's a pretty common phrase you'll see, if our students don't know how to read, what do we do? We teach them. If they don't know how to behave, what should we do? Teach them how to behave. So in the big picture, it's also important to recognize that we're not removing consequences. Consequences are important, but they need to be meaningful and ultimately with the goal of changing the behavior for the students so that they can be successful in the classroom and on campus. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you, Darlene. Jessica, anything you want to add?
So in the past, with our PBIS work, if you had looked at a matrix, you might see a lot of be respectful, be responsible, be safe. As we came back to our matrix, and if you look at Trax, you'll see accountable is up there. And we start to talk about what do these behaviors look like? Not just in the sense of being safe out on campus with others or respect, but what does this look like for me in my learning? So accountable, for example, is an academic behavior where we're encouraging our students to take ownership of their learning. Well, what does that look like? It's turning in your work on time, it's listening to the speaker, it's making eye contact. So we started to look at our behaviors and say, yes, we had a lot of campuses that had a lot of the social behaviors that we talk a lot about, but how are we building those academic behaviors so that we're paving that path toward that Portrait of a Graduate for college and career readiness? And so I just, I want to highlight these two schools and many of our schools that went back to the drawing board and really looked at what they had. And again, we're very intentional, what do we really want when students move from this building to the next building? And then ultimately into their community.
Thank you.
Can I add, I think a key piece there, too? You'll notice a lot of people added to their matrix a technology section, right? And that's not just for cellphone usage, but how are we using our technology to improve our learning as students? And how are we using it responsibly? So that's also a good example of how that applies in the classroom. This next slide is a snapshot of our recent school data from the student survey that they took this year. Our Trax team has taken time to really look over this data, analyze it, and determine what are our next steps. Our big focus, aligned with the DBUSD goals and expectations for this year, were sense of belonging and school climate. So while we were really excited to see a lot of those green arrows where our data improved from spring to fall, we also took a look at the trend of our data. So fortunately, we have data from last fall, last spring, and now current data. With that being said, we noticed a dip in our data in the spring months last year. And so while it's back up, it was important for us as a staff to have a conversation about why? Why does it look like this? And what are the things we're doing very effectively at the beginning of the year that we need to continue to do throughout those spring months when everyone's just getting a little worn down at the end of the year? That's the reality of it. And so we focused, again, on our Passport Days. And that's when our team decided we need to have an additional Passport Day in the spring. And then they talked about maintaining the way that we explicitly and continuously and consistently teach those expectations. Sometimes we get to the spring and we feel like they should know it already, but they don't. Just like adults, we need lots of reminders and supports. And so we need to be providing that for our students as well into the spring months.
Thank you, Darlene.
We move the slides around a little bit? Can you go to the picture section first?
Right there?
One more. Thank you. We want to start with the pictures. So last spring, Sam... So last spring, Sam and I brought the Behavior Team and the Guiding Coalition together to review the student survey data. And together, the team determined our two focus areas for this school year will be increase a sense of belonging on campus and increase student engagement in the classroom. So these are some of the proud moments we've had already with just quarter one wrapping up. In the middle, our first picture says the Pirate Way. That's what we call our expectations of be respectful, be safe, be kind, and be responsible. But in the middle of that picture is our mission statement. The work our teachers did over pre-service this summer was revising our mission statement. And we're really proud to say, you walked on our campus, I believe 100% of our kids would be able to tell you the Nortera Canyon mission statement. And it incorporates both behavior and academic language in it. The next-- the top picture that says new pirate welcome crew. Whenever we have new students come enroll to Nortera Canyon, within the first week, we have the welcome crew sit down with the students and review Behavior Matrix, PBIS Rewards, answer questions, give them tours, and have them make a connection with the new students right away. Over on the right-hand side, we just this year started All Things EQ Junior Ambassadors. So that's our third-grade group. They are our welcome committee monthly at the gate. They will say Happy Tuesday to you if you walk through their tunnel. And then down on the bottom, you'll see our sixth-grade All Things EQ ambassadors. And on average, we have about six students pushing into grade-level classrooms to support their peers, lower primary level grades. And then we do utilize the PBIS Rewards platform. So it's an app, and that is what we found to be very effective to monitor how we're awarding students with points and collecting data with that. We just recently pulled all of our reports and had teachers look at if we've been in school for 45 days, who has 45 points? And intentionally focus on students that don't have a certain level of points to make sure that they're feeling connected and tied to the sense of belonging. And then over on the very far left-hand side is our flagpole assemblies we do monthly. And we have students hold up our posters that are our mission statement. We close our assemblies out by stating our mission statement. And Sam is going to share the data. The main picture that we do need to celebrate is the neon picture, and that is the work of the Nortera Canyon staff. So the students are engaged, and our scores are increasing because our teachers are engaged and really believe in the work that they're doing.
Go back two slides, Sam.
Okay, good evening. Like Mrs. Milks' Teresa shared, we are focusing this year on sense of belonging and student engagement. So this is our data for student engagement grades three through five. If you look on the right-hand side, this is just a sample of the questions, and we did experience significant growth in all questions related to student engagement. Like Darlene mentioned, the graph on the left-hand side, we also noticed in review with our staff, there was a dip from Fall '22 to Spring '2022. So our staff and our Tier One Behavior Team is continuing to prep for the spring surveys with the work that Mrs. Milks just highlighted on the picture slide. If you click one more. So this is our third through fifth grade data focused on sense of belonging. Again, we experienced growth in all areas. The two pictures are things that we are very proud of, that we're being intentional with our staff. The top right is a fifth-grade ELA teacher, and she is a member of our Tier One Behavior Team. Our team is utilizing the Panorama playbook to respond to this data. So this particular activity was called compliments for confidence, and it's related to student sense of belonging. So I was able to participate with her class, and she taught this to the staff as well. So in this activity, Ms. Traumatazi, she's the teacher, she began, she gave a compliment to a student-- well, first she complimented herself, and then she gave a compliment to a student. Once that student received the compliment, they repeated the compliment that they got, and then they had to compliment another student. So this particular activity, I think, helped with sense of belonging, and I've seen other teachers on campus implement it since then. The picture on the bottom left, this is one of our third-grade teachers, Ms. Pearson. She invited me to go watch her class meeting. So we are encouraging all teachers, kindergarten to eighth grade, to host class meetings, or some have started grade-level meetings as well. So this is just a sample of celebrations related to--
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Teresa. Teresa, I'll give you the same question I gave Darlene. What would you say in terms of the staff embracing-- or not embracing, perhaps, the shift with respect to the essential behaviors that they are standards just like our academic standards? Would you-- could you talk to that a bit at your campus?
Last spring, we went through the unwrapping process with the behavior standards to determine-- and we did a sort, and we did all the things that you would do with academic standards. And I think that was a big aha moment for them and really helped them understand that this is just as important as the academic side because if you have the behaviors under control and everybody feels a sense of belonging, it will positively impact achievement.
Thank you, Teresa.
Yes, and I would also-- I would like to thank all three administrators for sharing tonight. And both campuses, coincidentally, also-- Nortera Canyon has already had some positive press coverage with a really cool story going on at Nortera Canyon. And I believe Fox 10-- and I know Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, but they're going to be out to film a Trax meet later in November as well at Sonoran Foothills. So there's some positive press in the valley going on, both at Nortera and Sonoran, as well as around the district. The next slide looks at another very important group of educators that are helping drive our MTSSB behavior work forward. And that is the counselors who are funded through the School Safety Grant, primarily at our K-6 campuses, who traditionally did not have counselors before the last few years. And this group of counselors meets during the PLC Friday release time. And they, just like our teaching staff, follow the PLC process to gather together, to share resources and to share strategies for supporting all tiers of student behavior, tiers one through three. Part of the requirements of the School Safety Grant is that they perform Tier One lessons to entire grade levels and classes where they will schedule time to go in and push into classes by grade level, worked out with administration and the teaching teams to really teach that positive Tier One instruction for behaviors that are relevant to their campuses and to their MTSSB teams. They are part of the Tier One Behavior Teams. They're part of the Guiding Coalition, and they're an important resource in our district to move this work forward. They attend conferences that align with our PLC work and our MTSSB work, and they take the time to review that data, to share resources, and to work together to rely on each other on how they can move their campuses forward in all tiers. So they also will poll groups at lunch. They'll do lunch bunches. They'll work one-on-one with-- who need a little more support, who need a little more intensive intervention. And we'll meet them where they're at, develop plans, monitor progress. That's all tracked as well through our systems and then help inform teachers that need help with those students who need that Tier Two or Tier Three support. And they are a great resource, working together through this PLC model on their campuses because they are singletons on their campus. So it is nice for them to be able to collaborate and strategize with other counselors that do this work in our system as well. And recently, I know the three of us-- Gary, Jessica, and I have all sat in on their PLC meetings. And I know Jessica has led some MTSSB and Panorama trainings to equip them with the resources to drive their work forward. So this has been an essential part of our machine moving forward over the last few years, and will continue to be so.
So I know you've been hearing a lot about the data that we're getting in Panorama, but some of the best data that we get is walking the campuses, talking to people that are there, and we're seeing it ourselves. And so something we've been able to embed through our region meetings monthly is at the host school, our team walks around the campus. We look at signage. We kind of look at-- get a feel for the culture. And we just talk to kids and staff, and we ask, hey, what are the essential behaviors here? Talk to us about, you know, we're seeing Trax posted. What does that mean? And it's been just a really great exercise for administrators in that they get to see how other campuses are addressing this work, getting a lot of ideas, hearing, getting to talk to other staff at schools and students. And then we come back together and debrief. And the purpose of this process is to ensure that, A, we have standards identified, but making sure that they're being taught. Because if they're just posted and we're just handing out tickets, which historically, with the PBIS framework, sometimes we forget pieces of it, and it becomes just the signs and the tickets. And it's so much more than that. And Behavior Solutions has really pushed us in our thinking and our questioning of, okay, so it's up. Is it being taught and is it being learned? And those are like the big pieces for us. So this has been an opportunity for us to-- we had this great plan. Let's see how it's going. And we have great conversations with our administrators, and we leverage this data alongside of the Panorama data.
And I would echo Jessica's sentiments on this slide. Another way of saying this for the campuses is really and truly the proof is in the pudding here. When you walk the campus and you start talking to folks, it's what can they tell you about what's expected? And what can they tell you in terms of who's teaching what and where with respect to these standards? And so this gives all campus administrators and us as district administrators a great insight into the progress that we've made and then how far we need to go as well in the future. So we'll continue doing these and reporting back to you. Okay, and then quickly, I'll take this one. So improving attendance. This is-- I will call this more of a minor focus for us. Our Title One schools have been looking at this one in particular to make advances with attendance. They are spending some time at our Title One monthly meetings, talking to each other, sharing some ideas about what is working for them in order to help particular groups of students get to school on a more consistent basis. And they are also doing this through some parent engagement PD that our manager, Lisa Crane, is providing for them as well.
We want to highlight what-- we've talked a lot about what we have been doing, but we still have more work to do. So our next training around Tier One and MTSSB is happening on November 1st. The purpose of this training is to really focus on the teacher team and first-best classroom management and how our leadership teams are supporting that. We also are going to have topics around alternative discipline strategies. And again, that's really just giving us tools in our toolbox so when we have behaviors, what are our options for those teaching opportunities? And John and Jessica Hannigan, again, leaders in this work, have resources for us, and not just in Behavior Solutions, but in the resource Don't Suspend Me. Our audience is going to include, again, those behavior teams from each campus, and it also includes all of our school psychologists, our counselors. We've included our PLC trainers, new teacher mentors. We really tried to cover anyone across the district that supports behavior, MTSSB, and any of our stakeholders to, again, come together with that common language and have an understanding of the tools at our disposal so that we can execute them effectively and efficiently. So that is coming up. And we also have--
Jessica, I'll pause you there. Just before we go, we have a few more slides to go. But the bulk of this, you can see, has been on Tier One. That is the focus of what we are doing this particular year. There are certainly areas for growth for us within Tier Two and Tier Three. However, we are doing our best efforts right now in making sure that Tier One is strong. Because just like you have heard before with academics, if you don't have the strong Tier One, you're going to constantly be battling uphill for that. And so that's why the bulk of the presentation that you've heard and what we've really placed our effort so far this year is getting that as strong as possible. There are some pieces that we've done at Tiers Two and Three, and so we'll hit those now. Jessica, go ahead.
Yeah, and just, again, to stress the importance of Tier One. The research says if you're doing Tier One really well, you can wrap your arms around 80% of the student body. And so that's why we're focusing so much because we want-- we want to get our arms around as many students as possible and focus on that prevention piece. We do have plans to move into Tier Two, as you can see. And there's four big areas we're going to be focusing on. Just like we have that Tier One team, we're going to look at, do we have a Tier Two team in place? And do they have the tools to identify students that are showing a need for reteaching in those essential behavior standards? What is the teacher's role in Tier Two? How can they support? And then, again, making sure that we have really clean systems for how we're collecting and monitoring the data when students are in Tier Two intervention. So that is our future path, which complements what you saw for Tier One.
Thank you, Jessica. And then we'll end with two slides from Dr. McCusker. Now, although I mentioned that the focus for us at the campus and district-wide level is Tier One, the Student Support Services Division certainly has a robust offering of services at the Tier Three level, and that's what Dr. McCusker will cover now.
Good evening, Governing Board. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about Tier Three supports. Just as a definition, and this comes straight from our Behavior Solutions experts, Tier Three really does focus on more intensive individualized remediation and support for specifically identified students. And when we look at intervention and processes, certainly this is something that is not unique to Student Support Services. We live in Tier Three every day. This is something we're highly invested in, and we continue to formulate our processes. As we look through the lens of the futures analysis, certainly there were recommendations from the futures analysis as well as our work teams that formulated the progress we've made. One of our celebrations is our Behavior Autism and Assistance Team. Jessica briefly highlighted that. We work collaboratively along with all of these amazing leaders in front of you to ensure that there is vertical alignment. So when we're talking about Tier One and Tier Two interventions, Tier Three is merely an extension to that. So when we talk about 80% of the population having their needs met at Tier One and Tier Two, when we look at the highly intensive population, our students on IEPs and our 504s, it's a smaller percentage of our student population. But they may require more intensive support from our BAT team. And our BAT team is comprised of highly-trained behavioral professionals. We have board-certified behavior analysts, BCPAs, and we also have behavior consultants. And many of our BCPAs and behavior consultants work district-wide. We provide more intensive support through a consultation process, and that is certainly a Tier Three intervention. We also work with referrals from specific campuses, and it goes through the principal, to help provide strategic support to a classroom, a teacher, and/or for a specific student behavior. The futures analysis also recommended our BAT team-- I call them a small but mighty team. Although they are comprised of a high level of expertise, we do have a small amount of BAT members, and it is quite challenging to provide services district-wide. So when we look at their support, they do work alongside our school psychologists with intervention plans for behavior and safety plans for students. And one of the ways that we formulate success is through fidelity checks. Our school psychologists are certainly another Tier Three intervention. When we look at their expertise, the development of functional behavioral assessments, behavior intervention plans, and of course, evaluating students that have been referred to them by sit teams, and that is our site intervention team. When we look at a high level of expertise for Tier Three intervention, special ed teachers certainly are experts in this domain. They provide specially-designed instruction identified by students' individualized education programs and/or Section 504 plans. And then, of course, our quite robust itinerant staff that includes many of our occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists at all. They provide supplementary aids and supports to students for Tier Three interventions. Also, looking through the lens of our future analysis, one of the recommendations was really looking at Vista Peak School and furthering the opportunities at Vista Peak. I have nothing but wonderful things to say about our amazing Vista Peak School. We continue to provide high-level and intensive services for students who meet that requirement and necessitate the need for a public-day school placement. We do provide behavioral health intervention at Vista Peak. If you are not aware, we have a behavioral health counselor that provides specially-designed instructions for social skills. And so that is a high-level approach, and we also utilize our Boy's Town method. And we also utilize our Boyz Town method. We also expanded one of our programs at Vista Peak. We have a RACE program that focuses on supporting students with medical fragility, and that is a new addition since the futures analysis came out with its findings. Our CPI training program, CPI is a nation-based program that provides positive behavioral interventions for students if they require. And what it looks at is, the high point of CPI is really looking at verbal de-escalation. And when we look at a tiered level of support, verbally de-escalating a student is always preferred versus going into physical intervention. So we have identified CPI teams on campus. They are trained by our district CPI trainers. Our BAT team and CPI trainers also, to provide a Tier One level of support, did create a verbal de-escalation video series for all staff members in Dura Valley Unified School District to access and benefit from. Again, we're looking at consistency and collaboration along the vertical alignment for Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. When we look at Boyz Town, which is located on four of our campuses in the district, Boyz Town lives on our Vista Peak campus and our specialized classroom management program. We have expanded opportunities for Boyz Town implementation, which is certainly a Tier Three behavioral intervention. Social skill instruction is the primary aspect of Boyz Town. And we've also added Boyz Town consultants. And they work specifically with school sites to provide additional assistance and guidance for teams. As we look at 2024 and 2025, continuing to expand our opportunities for CPI to ensure that staff is trained and that we are providing up-to-date training is a focal point, as well as Boyz Town and continuing expansion in the Berry Goldwater region.
Thank you, Melissa. So in sum, I'll take us back to our goals at the start. There we go. And so what you have heard so far is there has been a significant push for the school climate goal, our sense of belonging goal, our orderly and well-behave goal, our decreasing suspension. That training will come in November, and I will keep you abreast of that through the Friday updates. Our behavior integration is that school-wide check component. And that, too, has received quite a bit of attention since the start of the school year. And then the attendance, as I noted, has received less attention, but some attention from our Title I schools. And really, in the end, I want to repeat something that Darlene said, is that the shift we are looking to do is to have folks use the four PLC questions, not only through academics, but that they would apply that to behavior as well. When students know what's expected of them through that, when we have a process to reteach and then help those that already have it to use the RTI process, again, for behavior, not only for academics, that that is the shift we are looking to make, especially at the Tier One level this particular school year. And so with that, I'll thank you for your time, and we can answer questions.
I'd like to go ahead and take quick. If there's any questions from anyone attending before the board starts asking questions, just go and step to the microphone. On either side, if anyone can. Go ahead and state your name and then ask your question or make your comment.
Joshua Hawkins. I'm just kind of looking through. I was taking notes as the presentation was going on. Let's see. Specifically in regards to the online form for any complaints about bullying, harassment, or intimidation. When that's sent, it was mentioned that it's copied to the principal and the district to make sure that he side is notified. What's the expected response time on that online? So if I submit one today, when should I get a call or an email or a conversation with somebody about it?
For that piece, we try to, in all correspondence, we try to respond to folks in 24 hours.
And I believe in one of the earlier slides on the survey data, where it was, I think it was one of the first ones that you had up there about the percentages. It was one of the example questions. That one was the entire collected district data on that first slide, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Hawkins.
Okay, so on that particular one, is that particular data broken down specifically by school? Because on that particular one, forty percent were not favorable. So is that data able to be broken down so you can identify where that problem lies for the forty percent that are unfavorable at schools? Or is it just like a one big lump report?
Mr. Hawkins, we, so no, we do. We have data at the district level, and then we can disaggregate that by campus level as well. And I would, let me just repeat something that Tony said on this, that when you look at the student survey data, the algorithm that is used on the five-point scale counts only the top two when it displays a favorable rating. So when you break it down and look, because we do have the ability to look at the responses, all five responses within a question. And so you could get something, let's say, I know one of the ones that was highlighted for, Teresa, I believe you highlighted engagement in the class, and it was showing some very positive results, that you might see something like no engagement, okay, would be one of the responses. And then you might see little engagement is the second response. And then you might see some engagement as the third response. So that third response does not count in the favorability ranking that the company uses. So we can break it down, though, to see what levels are in the bottom two versus the top two. So that's something we have looked at as well.
Okay. Let's see. And then later on, it was mentioned about in the MTSSB for, I believe it was either the Tier Two and Tier Three just recently, that the consequences should be meaningful. Can we describe what that actually means?
Sure. And the principals may be able to add on some specific pieces to this. But meaningful would have that there's a logical connection to the behavior violation. And so it's meant to say that if a student, I'm going to give an obvious example, Mr. Hawkins, just to illustrate the point. So if a student is having some violation, let's say in the cafeteria, and it has to do with their perhaps not putting their food back where they're supposed to at the end, that a logical consequence for the kid might be something to help out in the cafeteria as opposed to doing something that's not connected to that. And so that's one example to where we would say, let's think of a logical and meaningful consequence for a student. I don't know, Teresa or Darlene, if you want to add on to that. Does that make sense, Mr. Hawkins, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Let's see, next question I might have. On here, it says the counselors receive training on how to use the data from Panorama to inform them of the next steps as pertains to behavior. Do they also get trained on how, what, and when to document when they're brought a situation?
I'm making the assumption, Mr. Hawkins, you refer to bullying? Is that what you, to that one?
No, just in general, any situation. So if somebody comes and says, hey, he stole my lunch money or he kicked my bike over, and the counselor's the one that's reported that information. So we're training them on how to extrapolate the detail from Panorama, but we're also teaching them how to put the information in there, too. So let's say they have a counseling session with a student because of a behavior. Is that then taught to them how, when, where, and when to document that information?
I get you, Ms. Hawkins. I think so, the log entry part, that's what you're asking about?
Correct.
Right from there. So our data, first of all, we don't enter data into Panorama. That way, we have a student information system, which is a minor point to your question. But in that student information system is where a counselor could input that, but that would be campus-dependent, depending on who the principal has assigned. It could be more than one person, Mr. Hawkins, for that, but it would depend on the campus and who they have. Now, there are specific parts that only counselors can see in a system, and that would relate to the particular infraction. So if it had something to do with, let's say, harm to self, for instance, that would be something that would be limited to a narrow scope of individuals who could enter and see that data.
Like a different section in the SIS or something like only certain?
It could. Who has that right, right, to see it?
There was another slide I saw that it's talked about a behavior intervention plan and also a safety plan in the same sentence. What's the difference between those two?
Okay, so a behavior intervention plan, or a BIP, as it sometimes is, that is a plan that in general, okay, Mr. Hawkins, I'm speaking in generalities, is usually going to be when you are in a Tier Three type of situation where special education services might become involved or if special education services are already involved and you do not have behavior goals and there is behavior evidence that the student is struggling with behavior, then the team might look at doing a behavior intervention plan. That is, as opposed to a safety plan, which is not related, is the thing necessarily to special education services. That could be for any student. It could be a student as well that has an IEP or is receiving special education services. But it is different because a BIP is usually only when you're involved at that Tier Three level.
All right, so just to clarify, so basically the difference is, is the one is specifically meant for the special education sector of the schools because they have obviously other things that they have to include with not just the behavior, but what other specialties that that particular student has as well. So they have their own plan because of other things incorporated versus the safety plan's more general campus, correct?
Yes. And again, and it could be related to other students as well, whereas the BIP really, Mr. Hawkins, is for that particular student, right, that's involved because of the nature of the individualized education plan.
Okay. Let's see, next I got. There's also mentioned one of the other slides around that same area, that you guys periodically do fidelity checks as well. Does that include doing a self-audit of documentation that the behaviors are being noted accurately?
No, I would, so the fidelity checks, that's, Dr. McCusker spoke to that, and that is a piece that they do specifically for, for, since Boyz Town, they will look to see that is a particular program that is used at some of our schools. And so there is criteria that they look at to measure what level of fidelity it's being implemented at. That would be more than what we will sometimes do in those other areas.
So the fidelity check is just more or less just to make sure that it's being implemented in general, correct?
Yes, again, against a criteria that are being put forth by, in this case, again, using Boyz Town. There's a set of criteria that they're looking for.
Just trying to see if there's anything else. There's much more information you guys might be able to get me on. One of the things, I was talking about, the Handbook Committee is going to review the JIC-K-EA, the complaint form. Is there any more specific detail we can get on what particular they're looking at changing, altering, adding, or anything, any details, or just kind of in the early phase?
I would describe it, Mr. Hawkins, in the early phase. But there has been some pieces, as I have commented to you and Mrs. Hawkins, that we do want to look at. And so that, traditionally, that process does start after the first of the year. And so there's a committee of individuals, Mr. Hawkins, that comes together from across the campuses and the district. And so that is something that we do intend to look at.
Anything that could be shared this evening or nothing that's firm yet?
I think it would be fair to say some of the clarity, again, as far as what has been suggested over the past two months, that that's something that we do want to look at to see, can that be strengthened?
All right. So nothing in particular that we have ideas on what to add to that particular form, at least as of now? Because we're just starting to look at revamping it, correct?
Since it hasn't come up yet, we won't be able to provide any information on that. We've done that before in the past. And it's just that they can't tell you information because it hasn't begun. So it won't, it just wouldn't, it won't happen yet. But as soon as that, I'm assuming it's going to be a committee?
Yes.
So it'll be, on the committees, there's a page where they keep the committees. You can watch kind of what that looks like and who's on it.
There's a process, and we're just kind of in the early stages of that.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
That might be all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and state your name for the record and provide your questions.
Jerry Nor. So during this presentation, I've heard MTSS systems, MTS-A and MTS-B. Can you help me understand what that is? I have no idea.
Sure. So MTSS stands for the Multi-Tier System of Supports. And it really refers to the fact that there are three tiers that we operate in for both academics and behavior. And within those tiers, you may have heard us earlier today mention Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. And so there are different levels of supports or interventions, that we may call them, that can occur within Tier One, within Tier Two, and within Tier Three. And in a nutshell, as far as who would fall so into those three tiers, you did hear some mention before that approximately eighty to eighty-five percent of our students would be captured within Tier One. And on top of that, we would see anywhere from seven to twelve percent that would be captured in Tier Two. And then we would have a smaller percentage of kids that would need the individualized supports that you saw listed before at that particular level.
And then what does the A and the B signify?
A is academics and B is behavior.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. So during the presentation, you put up some data on some survey. Is that an ongoing survey? Is that a one-time survey? Is that data available to the public? That's a complete?
The questions are available to the public, and that's what Mr. Goretty showed, SNP, from the website. So that is able to be seen. And then the survey is administered at least twice a year. We'll administer the survey to our students in grades third through twelfth grade. And then there is a smaller portion of the survey that will be administered to our students in grade six, twelve in December for a third time.
Okay, so I understand it's ongoing. So the data, as the participants fill out, is not available to the public?
No, it is not. The questions, though, again, are available to the public.
Okay, so it's hard to understand the survey as you use it when we don't really see the full picture of the survey, including the answers and the questions completely. But that's just my take from what we saw tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany Hawkins. I had a question on the MTSS, where you said that there's a check on fidelity. This team, we would probably consist of probably what? Principals, teachers, and stuff. Who from the district is going to be adhering to make sure that there's fidelity across all these forms, especially with the safety reporting going to spam? That's not something the principals and the teachers can go check to ensure that it went to spam or that someone received it. And how often is that checked to ensure? Because it took three weeks for that to be originally found. Where's the fidelity in making sure that we don't go three weeks trying to determine?
Again, Mrs. Hawkins, the items that were spoke to before as far as the fidelity checks, those refer to items that are different, we'll say, than the form that you're referring to. So when we walk campuses, there are campus administrators, there are district administrators. When we are looking for how well the essential behaviors are taking a hold in a particular school. So that is what we are referring to when we are doing those particular checks. And again, with Dr. McCusker, those would be fidelity checks to a particular program. For the form that you are referring to, the online form, again, we have done our checks on RN, looking to see why that went to spam in that particular case. And so we do tests on our own to see if it's going through. And so that is the process. And so we do tests on our own to see if it's going through, and so that is the process that we have checked, because we had not had that happen before to us.
And with that reporting system, like, how long had it been broken? Because from what we've found out, this has been enacted for a really long time, and we were the first report going in, if this is a safety report, you would see a lot more reports coming in through the years, wouldn't you? Wouldn't that be concerning to the district that your safety reporting form has had zero submissions in all these years?
That part, it would be inaccurate. We did have submissions that we received.
I'm just referring to what Joey said. Joey said mine was the first one that came in three weeks prior. My other thing would be on the safety plan. I saw that it was on the tier three. I also have that they've put my daughter on a tier three on top of that. So with them wanting to put her on a safety plan plus that, when we, like I said, when the only thing in the handbook for safety plan is underneath the threat assessment plan. And when you look underneath there, there has to be documentation that shows that the child is a threat and then put into a tier two or tier three before they're put on a safety plan. So why would someone being bullied be put on a safety plan underneath that?
Yes, again, Mrs. Hawkins, we reviewed this before with you. But again, that term that Mrs. Frank had used with you can be used as far as if a student is experiencing a particular behavior at school from others, that the, Mrs. Frank may ask or request that a parent go back and meet with the school principal, as was done in this case, to look to see if a particular plan can support not only that particular student, but other students as well.
Well, there would have to be documentation to show that there was aggravated circumstances that would put a child at threat. Nowhere in your handbook, that you guys have the parents go out and look, states anything about it being for the person being bullied. In your handbook, it only says that the person at risk for doing the damages is put on the threat assessment. And there has to be documentation, plus parental conference and everything else leading up to a safety plan. So there's nothing on your policy that states it would be for someone's being harassed, bullied, or intimidated.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's it for now.
Okay, is there anyone? Okay, seeing no one else, let's start with governing board, but can we start with Ms. Oldway, since we can't see her?
Could you repeat that? I thought I heard my name.
Yes, Ms. Oldway, do you have any questions for the various presenters regarding this topic?
Actually, I'm just going to make a quick observation and comment. I do appreciate the thoroughness of this report, and I'm hoping it's going to be posted, the slide part of it, for people to go back for. But in the essence of time, because I'm sure much of this is going to go into the second part of the study session, I just wanted to, again, say how very impressed I am with our progress and with our knowing that we have so much more to work on to make sure that our students are not only academically productive, but knowing that the importance of the social and emotional being is integral to that success. So that's my long, short thing I didn't have to say.
Okay. I do want to note for the community that the slides are posted in Board Docs, so if you just go to Board Docs under this topic, you can get the slides there. Governing board members, do you have questions?
Yeah. It was really nice to hear from the administration at Nortera and Sonoran, it's very helpful. Is, are we going to have an opportunity to hear also from some of our Title I administrators regarding how their progress has been going on with this program, or what they're implementing in their schools right now? Or are we doing it kind of more in a phase type?
Ms. Simic, we absolutely can do that. We in particular had Principal Baumgartner here today because she was part of our original team that we had going back, what, a year and a half ago at this point? And that, anyway, she has helped us quite a bit throughout this process, delivering training to all our campuses, so title and non-title for that. But that is something or an area that we certainly can look to do as we move forward.
That would be great. I love getting the feedback from the administration. It's fantastic.
And me too, right?
Yeah. What's that?
I said, "and me too." You said you loved hearing from them. Yeah.
And then, kind of just going back real quickly, briefly touched on our Title I schools and the concerns with attendance. I was able to speak to some Title I schools last week, and we actually were talking about this subject of kids whose parents wake up, go to work, kids are still asleep, then they wake up, get their day going, they might miss their bus, or their opportunity to walk with a group if they're Walker, and what kind of solutions we could come up with to kind of go back around and pick up those kids, or a way for them to have access to get to school in those circumstances. I think in the end, they just stay at home. I know that some of our Title I schools are getting hit really hard with attendance issues.
Yes, and that, again, in the stats we know from NCES, especially in Title I schools, are getting hit harder than others with the chronic absenteeism. If I may, I'll talk about one item that they may have spoken about, because this was brand new, and we had support from fiscal services. And our, part of our title grant has to have a budget allocation for parent engagement. It's a requirement by federal law. And so we have had a trainer with us who has asked us to think a bit differently at times about how we are engaging with our parents. And one of the pieces has been the sometimes frustrations you may hear folks say, that, well, we're offering this, but we're not seeing folks come to take part in whatever that might be. And so this particular trainer has asked us to shift that thinking and to really say, listen, you can knock your head against the wall forever if you want to about that, but part of that is probably not changing. And so think about how you can go to your parents more to help them. So one example of that is we recently had our mobile van was approved. And so I know there are members of the board that are here now that have helped us establish some of our clothing closets and our food pantries for our kiddos, which are fantastic. And we are also on top of that now looking to have our mobile van, which, again, we recently received, I believe even less than two weeks ago, I believe we got it. And so that van now is, we are stocking that with food supplies, with clothing supplies, with whatever other supplies we may have, and using that particular method, again, not to wait for families to come, but to say, we can go directly to you, and here's what we have for you that perhaps will help get some of our kids. One of the benefits of that may be to improve attendance for some of our kiddos who may be lacking some of those essential supplies.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you.
Mr. Carver.
Thank you. For Dr. McCusker, how would you say your progress is coming on your tier three supports for the 2023-24 school year?
Good evening, Mr. Carver. Thanks for the question. I believe our tier three interventions and supports are going quite well. We, through the futures analysis, have taken many of the recommendations and implemented our three-to-five-year plan. I believe a great example of that is certainly Vista Peak School. They are a great extension of tier three interventions and supports at the most specialized level. The interventions that they are providing for our neediest of students at that level is quite impressive. I always welcome everyone to visit Vista Peak School. It is a happy place to visit. We have intensive support there and really strategically have addressed those tier three level needs quite well. The focal point of Boys Town and specialized classroom management at Vista Peak School has also been a highly productive social skill instruction practice, where we are teaching students strategically how to disagree appropriately. Many of our students struggle with that as a social skill and a post-school outcome skill. We are trying to build young women and young men who are socially active in productive and positive ways. And so if you ever go to Vista Peak School and interact with a student, you will hear Boys Town skills come out of their mouth. It's a wonderful celebration when they can ask questions and not become frustrated or agitated. And if they do, there is a teacher there that is highly trained and/or a mental health practitioner who can provide that guidance and support through specially designed instruction. So as we look at implementation, I think we are doing quite well with recommendations from futures, but there's still more work to do. We are expanding our specialized programming as well. I heard recently you visited our SCORE program at Park Meadows School. I'm very, very proud of that program and its development. I want to give huge kudos to my team for setting up the structures in those classrooms and really assuring that we are providing the supports those students so desperately need.
On the note of Park Meadows, just kudos to your team there. They really are doing an amazing job. I got to watch them in action, and they were outnumbered, but you would have never guessed. All the children were on task and everything was in order. What would you say is your biggest challenge to reaching your goals that you have set for 2023-24 on your tier three supports?
I think one of our obvious challenges is staffing. At times when we look at, for example, the Behavior Autism Assistance Team, formerly called them the BAT team, when we look at our BAT team, part-certified behavior analysts and behavior consultants, it is a challenging job, it is a highly fulfilling job, but it is hard to staff those positions. So I would say staffing is a large obstacle, certainly word of mouth, and positive word of mouth is something we benefit from greatly in Deer Valley. Many of the people that come to work in Student Support Services come to us because of our reputation and the positive accolades, for example, that our BAT team receives. So our word-of-mouth recruitment is something we depend upon greatly, but I would say staffing is one of our highest concerns.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Okay. I'll try and make sense of my chicken-scratching notes. One of the things that kind of concerns me a little bit, way back when we were looking at the OCRdata.edu.gov for information, and I've noticed, even though they updated in 2020, there is no data from us since 2017. Do we not submit to the federal government disciplinary data, things of that nature, anymore?
Mrs. Fisher, I'll ask Dr. McCusker to help me with that one as well, because there are certain requirements for that, for students with disabilities that were in place, and some of that has evolved as far as what the state expects as well to see. There have been some, I'll call it complications with power schools, so it's been a statewide piece that has a team of folks working on it, not only from our district, but of course from around the state. But Dr. McCusker, would you add anything to that?
Mrs. Fisher, governing board, we are obligated on an annual basis in Student Support Services to provide data to the Arizona Department of Education, and they are the repository for the Office for Civil Rights. As well, our DEO department also collects OCR data, but specific to Student Support Services, we are obligated to provide data about or on IEPs that receive suspension, for example, for over ten days, and if services are provided outside of those ten days. So they ask very specific questions, and we have to upload data for the state, and then it is reported directly to OCR. But another aspect comes from the DEO department.
Do you know if the state has similar data to what the OCRdata.edu used to provide? Do they have something like that where we could look and research to look at discipline data?
Mrs. Fisher, governing board, I am not sure if the Arizona Department of Education has a consistent site or access point for that data. I do know there is a repository for us to place the data in. However, I don't know if the Department of Education at this time has it available for purview.
Okay, I'll follow up with them.
Okay.
I'm kind of going back and forth because we have, what level of work do we do with the Department of Education when it comes to this whole effort? Because we're talking about MTSS, we're talking about Boys Club, we're talking about essentially restorative justice in multiple different levels. So are we working with some of these plans which are already well-established within the Department of Education?
Mrs. Fisher, yes. Are you referring to the social-emotional programs that have been on the ADE site?
No, just in general. I'm looking up, I know with, at Phoenix Union, we pushed restorative justice in 2016, 17, and it actually did, has not been a good thing, not for teachers anyways, because children have learned that there's lesser consequences, and so they can push the envelope of teachers who are then faced with the brunt of behaviors. So there's some backfire with restorative justice, which then birthed things like MTSS, Boys Club, which it all comes down to somewhat of behavior modification programs. But the Department of Education already has programs that are well-established for training for all the things that it appears that we're doing. Are we linked into them to not duplicate those efforts because they're already done? Is there any type of a partnership with the Department of Education in these?
Dr. McCusker can speak to any particular partnerships through Student Support Services. I can speak, Mrs. Fisher, to, I'll give one example, the school safety grant program. And so that is through ADE. And so we do have monthly meetings with our safety grant counselors, our social workers that are in there, although there's not many of them, and our SROs that are part of the program, along with our SSOs, now that we have a larger number of those particular folks. And so we do integrate with ADE with their talks. They call them coffee talks. It's a virtual meetings that they have each month, and then they have office hours as well. So that is one particular area where we do work with ADE, listen to some of the professional development, if you will, that they provide, and then our schools do have some conversations about that. In fact, that slide that you saw there with the counselors earlier today that had Tony and myself, that was one of the topics that they are talking about, is what can they do together as a unified group looking at what ADE is providing?
Okay, Ms. McCusker. Sorry, Dr. McCusker.
Mrs. Fisher, governing board, we are actively engaged with the Arizona Department of Education in many venues. For example, compliance and monitoring, we are consistently in a program monitoring status or cycle with the Arizona Department of Education, where they actually audit individualized education programs, implementation of service delivery, and that is conducted through a cycle program and years of monitoring. So that is one aspect. We are also highly involved with the Department of Education and their Family Resource Center. It is also called Raising Special Kids. And RSK is an avenue and a support system that works directly with our families and can be an added resource for them, and that is a government-mandated aspect of the Arizona Department of Education. We're also highly involved with Arizona Department of Education when it comes to relevant professional development or any type of legal matters to assure that we are updated in current practices and procedures for the implementation of special education. As well, we work directly with dispute resolution through the Arizona Department of Education to ensure that parents' voices are heard and we are able to constructively mediate processes with parents. So I would say on a weekly basis, Mrs. Fisher, governing board, we talk to the Arizona Department of Ed on a daily basis.
To what level are we utilizing the professional development that they provide?
Mrs. Fisher, governing board, I would say that it's a collaboration, that we're utilizing not only recommendations for not only recommendations, for example, that come from program monitoring. We utilize many of the recommendations or findings that they have. We celebrate areas of strength that they have recognized, and then we also identify any areas of deficit that have been identified by the Department of Ed for compliance and monitoring, and we deliver that to all of our Student Support Services staff members. So dependent upon the domain, it's an active collaboration where we are delivering and receiving feedback from the Department of Ed.
Okay. When you said that you partner with the family services, is there anything currently services that we are providing through them or with them or that they are providing regarding direct behavior modification, specifically with the younger children?
Mrs. Fisher, Governing Board, I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you asking if Raising Special Kids is providing specific behavior monitoring to parents?
Well, no. Raising Special Kids provides a lot of information, but it doesn't provide the class form time out. When I was in the situation, not long ago, when my son was a baby and I didn't know what the world sports to do with him, he was biting other kids, I went to ASU and I took a class on behavior modification, learned how to chart, to look whether it's behaviors or if they're actions or reactions, so I could identify kind of what was the cause of the behaviors. And then I worked to learn extinguishing measures. One of the biggest things that I get a lot of calls about, specifically ironically through crisis lines, is that parents find themselves in crisis. They don't know...there's a behavior. They don't know what to do. They don't know how to extinguish a behavior. Oftentimes, they'll be just this close to that point where the child releases and calms and they give in, which means that the next behavior, the child's going to start at that level and then go on. It's all part of the behavior modification. Do we have something like that that we are currently doing, not only for our parents, but for our teachers, so that they are extinguishing the behaviors without escalation or prior to escalation or not giving in before it...before they meet that sweet spot? And I think you know what sweet spot I'm talking about, where the behavior is somewhat extinguished in the calmness of the child. Do we have classes like that that we're providing?
Mrs. Fisher, Governing Board, yes, we do. So we have a variety of supports and trainings, not only for our parent community. Our most recent parent webinar did focus on positive partnerships, and Raising Special Kids was one of those aspects. Raising Special Kids or RSK, the acronym that they utilize, actually does have some behavior modification training for parents, and so that is something they've expanded upon. In Student Support Services, along with collaboration with the individuals who are sitting in front of me, when we look at Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three interventions, by the time a student arrives at a Tier Three level of intervention, we are very involved. And so when we look at training not only for staff, but when we look at training for parents, certainly our BAT team is one of the preeminent trainers, where we provide just-in-time training to strategically identify, let's say, campus ABC needs some more support in their learning center. Our BAT team can go out for a consultation, provide strategic support. We also have communities of practice. Multiple times per month, Student Support Services hosts a community of practice. It is a voluntary opportunity for professional development learning based upon input and questions from staff members. So if a staff member says, "We really would like to have some more information on how to identify behaviors," our BAT team will present at a community of practice. So we also deliver PD and trainings at our itinerant meetings, which incorporates all of our itinerant staff. So there are many different opportunities for us to provide that strategic...
Okay. I don't want to go off the topic to something else until I finish that one, but it sounds to me like we're hitting it after. Because the BAT team, for example, they're going to...when the child's identified, they're at the point they're already...they're already probably heading towards Level Two or beyond. What efforts are being made? I don't want to hit...there's a later topic with special ed. Are there efforts being made, specifically maybe with special ed teachers or some teachers, to empower them to identify potential behaviors that are about to start? Let me give you an example. A child with autism doesn't necessarily have, you know, other disorders, but a lot of them will reflect. So you see a student that keeps stopping at a doorway and you're wondering, "What is this kid doing?" Are we giving teachers the tools to be able to identify? I notice Joey stops at the door, you know, just before he goes through every time, taps his foot three times and shakes his hand to the right. That kind of like identifying so that they can perhaps take modification steps prior to it ever becoming a level that ever has to go to anyone. It, at that point, becomes something that that teacher will bring to an IEP meeting and put that support in long before it ever...I guess my goal would be that it never has to get to any of you, that it gets enough support to be resolved before. Are we doing that kind of training or at least providing that kind of training to those who wish to have it?
Mrs. Fisher, Governing Board, we are providing that training. And to be clear, it's not just the BAT team that is providing training. Again, there's tiered supports that are certainly coming from Behavior Solutions, and I believe when we look at a vertical alignment, when we look at Tier One, a solid Tier One implementation, let's say of classroom rules or procedures, that can really support at a basal level. When we are speaking specifically about a student with autism, I'll use your example, it's not just the BAT team that's involved. A properly-certified special education teacher has formalized training, and they are experts when it comes to behavior. So when they truly look at developing a unique and meaningful IEP that is measured to meet their success, they will be collecting data. They will also collaborate with other site experts. That could be the school psychologist, that could be a speech-language pathologist, it could be an occupational therapist. All of these experts can collaborate together to develop a system of support or strategies that are more preventative and strategic in nature. For example, a student that is stopping right before the door, that could be a speech-language pathologist developing a social story. That could also be our occupational therapist, our OTRs, developing a motor plan. It could be our OTs really looking at sensory support for that student. So I think it truly takes a village of expertise to be able to tackle behaviors with a preventative or proactive strategy.
Mrs. Fisher, if I could, I'll jump into that, too. What you vocalize is a shared goal. We...so a shift with Behavior Solutions for us is, in our old world, I'll say, and Tony or Jessica, feel free to jump in if you want to, or any of the principals, because they've been doing this for a while. In the old world, this system relied upon the teacher, once you got beyond Tier One, to say, "I'm going to bring this child to you," and they might be called, and you've heard them, Miss Fisher, you know, like a student study team, something like that. And in the, I'll call it the new world, or where we are looking to go, is that the school-wide team would assist in that process as well. And so it does not rely solely upon the teacher to be the one to bring the child to the team. But the school-wide data points would also help the system identify who should be coming to that Tier Two level so that there are fewer kids that do get, as you said, the BAT team, right, in the end. So I don't know, Tony or Jessica, if you want to add on to it. If you don't, it's fine, too.
Yeah, I would jump in as well that, as we've had a concerted effort on our Tier One teams, the ask from campuses as well is now that we've got our Tier One behavior team in place, what is our Tier Two? And those are going to be more the behavior experts and interventionists at a given campus who understand behavior better than maybe a classroom teacher would have, so that they can brainstorm those solutions that if a child isn't responding to Tier One and needs more support, we're not rushing straight to trying to identify a student through the special education process and referral process directly. To your point, we'd want to look at what do the experts on our campus have in mind that we can put in place? We build a plan and a behavior intervention plan in Panorama, and we track that with fidelity for at least six weeks. And then we look at the progress, and then we look at, "Has the student been successful? Has Joey shown improvement? Do we need to set another goal? Or maybe this is a referral to Tier Three and we need to keep moving up the continuum." But we don't want to rush straight through the special ed referral process, to your point.
Right. And my concern, more than I might have missed the point, because I do understand we have a system or process. My concern is, do we have adequate...what do we need to have adequate supports for our teachers? Because behavior modification can be applied to typical children as well, normies, or your puppy, honestly. It's essentially identical to dog training. It really is, and it's just giving them those...that power to...because it's just behavior modification, and it's small, minor things within the classroom. The example I gave you was corrected by a gentle hand on the back and a slight push through the doorway every time, which then ended in, after about a month of a look back and someone about to push me through, and then it was extinguished. It's the same way we extinguish biting and scratching. But are we providing adequate supports, I guess, for our teachers in general to understand behavior modification and changes? And if we're not, and it doesn't have to be answered now, but if we're not, there are a lot of programs within the Department of Education, and if not there, there are one or two basic classes that we could provide that would really support and help our teachers. So I'll go off that subject. To the surveys, when you talked about, when I looked at the data...sorry, get back to the surveys. When we're looking at the data, we're...and that was part of what got me to looking at the OCR site, because their data was well-established when it was up to date. It's kind of useless from 2017 at this point. I look at...okay, let's just...let me just grab one. Northera Canyon, I guess that would be Slide 18 or something? I don't have numbers. Let's go down one. I'm trying to find a page number. Okay, so let's just say, "Question: How much respect do students at your school show you?" Responded favorably, 61%. So that's the top two questions.
Correct.
So one could have been 10%, the other one could have been 51%, correct? Am I correct in what I'm reading?
You said the other one could be what, Ms. Fisher? When you say to your numbers?
One of them could be 51%, and the other one could be 10%. That gives us 61% of the total answers.
For the top two?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. So if I look at that 61, that means that there's an additional 39. That could be in any of the other three.
That is correct.
So how often do we look at that total data? Because there's a big difference. If the number one is 10 and number two is the 51, there's a significant concern there. We're still really not hitting the mark. Because some of these questions are such that we should have much higher numbers, unless there is a greater problem. And the reason I mention that, and is trying to make sense of the data, is because we...over the years, as schools have started to implement these programs that then are somewhat taking into account things that parents should already be doing at home and we should be reinforcing. And I understand there are some of our title schools that perhaps parents have to work. You know, I leave to work at...well, if I'm on time to work, I leave by 6:00, and I don't generally get home until 8:00. So if my children were young, it would not be good for them. So I do understand parents have to do that, but my concern is as we've started bringing these programs in, we're spending a lot of money on programs. Programs to train a team that does...just trains the other team that trains the next team that trains the next team, and we review and we re-review and review again. But...and we get these minor gains in a student, nine students, six students, answered in the top two, better this time than the last time. But there's still a large amount of students that are not okay in this area. And so I have two problems with these types of surveys and questions. They're aimed and targeted surveys. So if my top two are high, then my program is great. We're doing awesome. Now, it could be that that question is just something that the majority of children aren't going to be high on. If my bottom two questions are high, there's a justification for additional funds, additional resources, we're going to train more trainers and have more teams. I'm concerned that we're spending a lot of time on the system and the method and the impression and the look and the design, and eventually perhaps we hit a child with it. And our priority should always be the kid first. So I am a little concerned that maybe we need to focus a little more towards the kids. And I do see where you're showing that in the future years, those are going to be a higher type of priority. It's more towards the campus, towards the student, towards the classroom. I would really love to see this pyramid upside down. I think our priority, and this is just my opinion, our priority needs to be providing supports for our teachers.
Yeah, maybe I could jump in here. The purpose, how I look at data, is I'm looking for trends. That's the only way that data is valuable to me. It's not a snapshot. It's trend data. That's why trends are so important. So to your point, why we put efforts, money, time, training, is we have 35,000 students. You have, in a system this large, you have to have systems that collect data that can be interpreted into how your behavior modification plans are going. If you don't have a collection system that is, concludes 42 schools, 35,000 kids, 4,000 employees, you will not have valuable data. You will have what most school districts have, and that is building success, not system success. So this kind of data is valuable to administrators, to teachers, because what they are trying to do as they show the first part of their program, or first part of their presentation, they've done these six things, and then they look at their data, did it move? That's why you do the survey three times, because you're looking for a trend. Trend is what makes data valuable.
Problem I have is that it's not...I use trends for everything. I use trends when I'm looking at world markets. I use trends when I'm looking at behaviors. I have, for my son, who is now 24, I have 21 years of data in files. I look at trends, trust me. That's how I got pregnant. I charted my temperatures and watched for the spike. I mean, trends are very important. However, if the trend is meaningless, if I were to do a survey that said, "What do you do when you get up in the morning? I use the bathroom, I put on my slippers, I get a drink, I take a shower." It didn't matter how y'all ranked it, all of you do that same thing, unless some of you don't, and then I'm concerned for you. But all of you are going to answer that you do those things. So I know it's a meaningless survey to provide that survey to you. You're not...it's not going to tell me anything about you and about how I can improve your day or you. Data is very important, and that's what I'm concerned at when I look at this data, because in this form at least, it tells me nothing. Even if I look at trend, kids are really smart. Kids are very, very smart. If you're giving them the identical survey three times, they're going to themselves be able to assess what it is that you're really looking for, and the truth of it is, at the end of the day, and I don't really care what y'all think, they care what those teachers think. I want my teacher to be happy with me, and I think if I answer this way, my teacher will be happy. And so as you get more... And so as you get more of these, as you look at that trend, it's not going to provide meaningful data. So that's where I'm concerned, especially if it's not being looked at, the trend in individual, and that's, I think that's maybe, one of the community members asked about the data being online. Obviously not to an individual child, but in aggregated data of all five kind of questions. If there's a significant number of questions that are that middle kid, then you have a bunch of kids that are just like, oh dear God, I can't deal with, and they're doing cc, cc, cc. I was one of those kids. Or, let's make a picture, and I would, you know, you're going to have that. So, that's part of my concern, is that maybe our questions, I like to be wrong, maybe we'll look more later, maybe I'll come visit and we'll get a better idea of kind of what that data is, but the meaningfulness of the questions are, because our point isn't to make sure administrators know that their school's doing good. The point of our questions is not to know that we're doing, the point is that we are improving our children.
Mm-hmm.
That our children are learning in the end, and their behaviors are changing. And I know that that comes with behavior modification, that's why I brought it up. Because that little boy who they told me would never talk, doesn't shut up. And he's actually pretty cool. He's got a heart of gold, and he's a really great kid. It took years of behavior modification, with my efforts, with the efforts of every teacher that had him in their classes. But I knew that a lot of them knew it. And the ones that didn't, the teachers that had the hardest problems with him, didn't have the supports from the district for behavior modification, because they didn't understand it. And so that's a little bit of my concern. But I do appreciate the presentation, I do, I am glad we're at least thinking about this. The whole point of pushing for a special education review was that we were going to move in a positive direction, because the increase in special education students is going up at such an astronomical rate that I'm concerned with how we are diagnosing, whether or not we are misdiagnosing, and that also changes a lot of our behaviors, but that's a much larger question.
Yeah, I think our data's been the same for the last 15 years.
It's been more than that. Is there any other questions?
Can I add something, just really quickly?
Absolutely.
Okay. We, as you can see, we only have three data points so far, and like you said, I don't know, we look at trends and we're trying to figure out how to utilize it.
Correct.
But the reason that we do the student survey, it did start with getting the student voice and bringing that to the table. And so that, when we got Panorama to start, it was to have all the data in one place, and it was able to look at what was coming in power schools and attendance and have it all in one place. And we added the student survey component from a standpoint of bringing in what, how are students feeling about the experience? And it goes back to, we might say we're doing all these great things, to your point, and we're saying we're teaching it and we're doing these plans, but whether the students, how is it hitting on that student level? And so I don't know what this data will tell us in the future for our actions, but I just want to stress that this really came from a place of just wanting to bring the student voice to the table, so.
Oh, I 100% believe you on that. And I will tell you, and this is, I guess, part of my concern, is because, and it's not, I am not one of those ones that wants to beat up on the district office, I've always worked in a district office, so that's not my point. But I will tell you, 2017 or so, when I went to one of the Panorama booths, you know, you had that nice big map, and they give you that whole display, and can you pick what your district does and what your, whatnot? I told them, I said, I'll take the challenge, and he goes, really? He goes, you're a board member. I says, not, not in that district, in the district I work in. And he goes, okay, let's, so we started naming the schools, Caesar Chavez, they're going to be this, 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 and this, and he pulls it up and he goes, okay, Brown. And I told him, and he goes, how do you know that? I said, because I do student activities and athletics, and I watch the kids, and I know what these kids are doing, and overall. And so my point is, is that our teachers, if we're, that's why I say I want the, I'd love the pyramid to be upside down. I'm not saying teachers have to be the one and only priority, but they're with them daily. Data points are great, and it's going to tell you some information, but if it's not getting to that level and that point, because they already know the kids. And so when they see stuff like this, and it's probably why I'm looking at it the same way, it's like, this doesn't tell me anything about your school. This doesn't. But, because I could already have said these if I worked in that school, I could have already picked them out. And so, I think we're going in the right direction, I just think we need to take it a little more to a pinpoint, if that makes sense, so that what we're doing isn't just an exercise, it's a methodology to an effective outcome.
Ms. Fisher, I'm not sure if I'm following entirely, but is one of your questions, do we have this at the classroom level?
No, it's...
When you said, when you're emphasizing the importance of the teacher?
No, it's the importance of, is of providing the support to the teachers. That's my concern, is that, you know, let's take Vista Peak for an example, because we mentioned it, and I love Vista Peak. But I will tell you, when that school first, first went in, and there were some teachers that were not very happy, I went to that, to that school, and, you know, I talked to the principal, we were walking around, and I had one of the teachers that, that she just, do you see how these kids do? Do you see that behavior? And I looked at the principal, and he looked at me, and he goes, do you see that behavior? And I said, yeah, he's happy, he's having fun. Teacher didn't see it that way. She's looked at it as, she was being challenged, she was being affronted, it was coming at her. Not everybody is intended, for one, to work with a special needs child, because what is a behavior, for one, may be an assault or an affront to another. So, there's a couple things. One, allowing our teachers to identify how they can identify a child's needs, the student's needs. And two, identify their needs. I will tell you, I will never be that soft and fluffy, feel-good individual. I will give you facts and data, I will solve your problem, I will fix your car, I will build your building, I will give you a plan on how to modify a child's behavior based on data. I will not be that touchy-feel-good person. Teachers need to be able to say, you know what, I really do not, this is this, I'm an awesome teacher, and it's safe for me to say, I'm not able to handle this area, so I need a support, because I'm an awesome teacher, and I'm going to teach all these kids, but I need a support in this one area, because it's not my strength. That's my greater concern, is that where this is going.
I would add too, Ms. Fisher, this, the survey data is one data point we use, but if we, if you can go back to the Sonoran Foothills slide, and the identification that the bottom right corner there, that Darlene mentioned. So, in these tier-one behavior meetings, that's kind of exactly what you're speaking to. Teachers use classroom-level minor data that they are seeing at the classroom and then at the grade-level trend to identify what are the problem behaviors going on at Sonoran Foothills in September. And in this case, and Darlene can correct me if I'm wrong, they identified that disrespect was the behavior across campus that all of their teachers were identifying, was the number-one concern. So, that precise problem statement was developed based on, had nothing to do with Panorama, it was just looking at the classroom-level teacher input that they had tracked through that time, that this is what we need to focus on this month. Then, at our meeting in October, we come back and we look at, okay, how many documented instances of disrespected we have? Is that still our number one? Do we need to continue working on that, or is there something more pressing that we need to address? And then they react.
The one thing that I'm missing is, what support did we give? Our teachers identified it was disrespect. What supports and strategies did we give them? Is that part of this meeting?
Yes.
Supports and strategies to all the teachers, in that situation?
Yeah, and that goes back to the three hours, the reteaching, the reinforcement, and the routines would put into place, whether that's through lessons on the announcements for all students, or emphasis, particular lessons that they will set aside their RTI time, or whatever time the team deems necessary, to go back and teach preventative lessons, to your point, for all students. That's exactly...
Some of that is helpful, because the last thing that we want to do is give teachers just another assignment, another work.
No. We kind of refer to that team as the problem-solving team for behavior on the campus, for everybody, to come with solutions.
We have a comment? Go and state your name for the record as well, please.
I just wanted to talk on the positives of Panorama, and I will be honest with you, as I've only been teaching in the district six years, when they threw this at me, I hated every bit of it. However, since I've gotten trained, and part of it was the timing with everything else going on that it was introduced, since I've been trained, since I've learned it, I'm still learning it, and I think most employees would tell you they're still learning it, because there's a lot involved, in a good way. It has actually been really awesome. And I'll say that, the reason being is, I can see that as my students come up to me in third grade, where they are, where they went, where they came from. And that's something that I think is really important. I'm currently using it for my tier-two group and tier-three groups, and I keep track of what's going on with all of them. So I have small groups, I have some that are individual programs. Last year, I had a behavior one, and it helped so that when that child got up into the next grade level, the teachers up there already knew what I was doing to support him with the behavior. Guess who made honor roll this year? I cried, because I worked with him all year, and I used Panorama to support what he needed. There, it has in there, the, you can choose how you list it, the modifications or the whatever behavior, things that you're working on. It was really wonderful, and I'm now somebody that thinks it's really important, so I wanted to let you know, because I know it seems like, it's, you know, when I think about it, I don't think about that survey. That's the least of my worries, but the rest of it works for us as teachers. It might be extra work, it might be, you know, you get that email that says you didn't update, that's okay, because I can see that change as the children are progressing, and that's the part that I like about it. So I wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, the Panorama actually is pretty cool. The presentation they put, maybe we should put a rerun on the website so people can see what it does and what it can provide, it is really good. My concern was specifically this data.
I can tell you with the survey part that you're questioning, as a third-grade teacher, those questions are tough for our third graders, so I, we read all of those questions to them. Sometimes I have to reword them so they understand, because there's technical words in there. But for the most part, as they're doing that survey, I stand in the front of the room or away so they can see your answer, and I say to them, I want you to be honest. If you hate something I do, it's not any skin off me, I'm good with it. But, most of the time I feel like third grade, they're still young enough where they're pretty, they put in some nice comments, or they're honest. I feel like, from comments I've heard from other teachers as they grow, get up in the upper grades, especially sometimes the middle school, they don't take it as seriously. But, I still think that there's a positive part to seeing those surveys being done. It helps me as a teacher, because then I know kind of how my students are feeling as a whole. I don't necessarily go look at each individual one, but as a whole, I think that's what I look at. I do kind of think the trends fall in there a little bit, but the program, it works, and I'm glad we have it. It's really helped also with identifying our kids through the special ed process and what they need. I know I've sat in meetings where I now don't have to give them all the data, because it's there for people to see, and we can all talk about it at the same time. So I'm not dragging any papers or whatever I have. So it is very, very helpful, so I do want that to be known. I know I complain about new things and change, but this is the way.
We all do. Thank you. You know, on this topic, also, still? Yes? Okay. That is so distracting, having you guys over there. I don't think there's anybody sitting right here. Can you come to this mic right here? And, I don't know when we got to putting people so far away, we've never done that. And then when she's done, you'll be next. But, oh no, we've always done that.
Uh, hello? Okay, so Tiffany Hawkins, so you guys were going over the Vista Peak and everything else that you guys have, and the mottos that you guys use, and how you guys, you know, review it with the children and everything else. And with that, I kind of asked my kids, who are currently here with me, do you guys, does their schools participate? So I, it's good to know that your guys' schools are doing that, but is all schools participating in doing that? Because I have two daughters here that I just asked, and they don't have, they say the motto and all that at the beginning of morning announcements, but they do not review anything else with the students. So is that how we're showing the kids, by just repeatedly saying it every morning on auto-drive, in hopes that they understand and comprehend what you guys are looking from them?
Mrs. Hawkins, there would be, one of the ways could be the announcements, and certainly that is a method that many of the schools... But there are a variety of ways that they could do it. Ms. Baumgartner mentioned the Passport, particular method that they use. Some of our schools do use that particular method. We have other schools where the school-wide team will design a lesson, and that, you're nodding your head, so I don't know, Sam, if that's how you do it at Nortera, but they may choose that particular piece. We also have some school-wide teams will do it by a video. And so, the video then will be shown, and it might be once a week, it might be once a month, it depends on the frequency that the leadership team would decide upon. But there are multiple ways that each school may choose to do it. And then the schools are learning from each other, right now too, because this is new for us this year, to do it with all of our schools. And so that is one of the reasons why the slide that we had on the school-wide check, because you inquired about that before. So, what we do is, we have five regions in our district, and therefore the five high schools that we have, and the feeder schools that are involved within each region, they come together at a particular school in that region, and then we do walk the campus. And so the goal is that we would walk every campus in that region over the course of this school year. And then, the principals would go, and they pick kids at random, and they pick staff members at random, and they ask them questions about some of the pieces, in fact, are listed here, the particular questions. And then, there's a protocol, and the protocol is simply just, what did you notice about what the student said? What did you notice about what the staff said? And they report that back to the host principal of that campus, and then that principal would make action steps for continuous improvement based off of that feedback. And so, I don't think we've hit Nortera this year yet, but I know we hit Sonoran Foothills last year, or last month, excuse me, and in fact, we did one today. And so we do that five times a month, is when we do that.
Okay. The next one, Dr. Finch was talking about trend data, and documenting and having the data for you guys to be able to put that in. Just with an example of us having, let's say, in the six years of our cases, about 12 of them have been not documented. That's an average of one case per year with my children. If you take that in consideration with how many students you guys have, which is 36,915, if each one of those students went undocumented, by the end of that, you'd have 200,000 undocumented cases in six years. That seems like a heavy amount that would not be implemented into your power schools/panorama. So, if you have about 40,000 cases undocumented, then your true data in your panorama wouldn't be efficient or factual.
I didn't hear a question, Mrs. Hawkins, in there, but I, it's hypotheticals in terms of what you're talking about, as far as what would be the case if something happened across the board, so.
Well, I'm just, with it not being, if they're, not all cases are documented, all these programs that you guys are using, that shows the stats that you guys are decreasing, or that we have, it's increased and it's up, and we're showing positivity, but if it's not all cases are being documented, that statistics you have, and all your guys' reports, the ones that she uses, the one she uses, the one that he uses, the ones that they use, they're all going to be not factual, because you could potentially have 40,000 cases undocumented for the year.
Now, can I just ask a quick question? Are these, are, this is documenting data, overall feelings, not specific cases, correct?
I was referring to trends, academic trends, state data trend, trends, intended trends, not about general trends. You know, when students are specific behaviors, then that is all classroom-driven and goes up the chain. That doesn't, that is put individually into Panorama, which is a new system.
Well, if it's not put in a panorama, well, it starts with power schools, it's supposed to be documented power schools, and then pulled over into Panorama, and then that's what you guys use. And from what we've been told, is you set the criteria of what you want to be pulled. But if all that data is not in there, then when you're pulling it, then you don't have true stats.
Okay. I get you, Ms. Hawkins, it's a, you're asking about consistency, right, as far as...
Yes, because if, I mean, every one of my cases have not been documented... Yes, because if, I mean, every one of my cases have not been documented, so ours are not in here showing as a problem.
No, I, I.
Or aggravated circumstances or anything. So if I'm one person, one parent within this district and I have total of 12 within the six years, how many more students are going undocumented? Not heard, not seen and not in your data? That seems concerning.
Again, I think the, the question, Mrs. Hawkins, as far as is consistency important in the system, I agree with you on that. And that is something, as Mr. Galetti mentioned, that we can do with our MTSSB system refinements is we look to be more consistent.
And is there going to be oversight, like a committee that is going to oversee your reporting systems for your bully reporting or your safety school reportings or these? Making sure that teachers are all inputting? Because I've asked about over a dozen teachers and they were not even aware that documentation was needed or about these bullying forms. So if we have multiple staffs that aren't aware, and I know you guys are slowly in this training now, but you guys have been in the district for how long and been having behavioral issues and these forms have been around well before this MTSS stuff? Documentation has been the law for years. The 15-341 requires all documentation. So across the board, it should always be documented.
That doesn't mean it has to be documented in a machine. It can be documented in a classroom.
But it needs to be transcribed into it so that it's on the kid's file.
It has to be collected when we deal with a specific situation and that's what happens when you move a student up in the tiers.
So where do their files go then? If it's not being transcribed?
Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three is where.
But that's not documentation?
I think we're getting off topic.
Yeah, that's why we don't sit at the table.
Would it be beneficial, no, that's not why we don't sit at the table. We've always sat at the table, we've always had this. We'll, we'll discuss it later. Would it be beneficial if we had a study session that discussed specifically in the future, put on a topic like Panorama versus Power Schools? Like that path? Would that be beneficial to understand that for the public?
Maybe, Mrs. Fisher, there wouldn't be a lot to that. Panorama just takes what's in Power Schools. So it, it feeds the system.
I don't think the system is really, it's, 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 the system, like you said, is great if it's used properly, but if there's no documentation.
But that's for a different, that's for a different thing.
For what, the Panorama?
So, Mrs. Hawkins?
No, that's what Joey told us, is all the behavioral issues are, come in through from Power Schools. So the teacher inputs it into Power Schools when an issue comes up. Daily, the Panorama system pulls it and then he creates the criteria that creates your guys' little programs and shows them what you guys have.
Mrs. Hawkins, I think I could speak to that, that particular point. So we have a Power School log entry system where, and teachers don't input into it. It's administrators or those who have administrative rights in Power Schools. So if there is a, a major or office-level referral intervention, the principal or assistant principal or dean would enter that into Power School. That information then uploads into Panorama and pulls according to, if it's a discipline issue, attendance issue, or a general comment. Those can all be filtered out through both systems. And one of the things we've done this year and are continuing to work on is, we talked about calibrating and aligning our log entry process so that the data we put in needs to be clean so that when it comes out, it's clean and it's accurate. So for example, at our assistant principal and dean training last month in September, that was one of the topics we looked at, is we pulled data from Panorama. And for example, if a location was not entered in a drop-down field where the offending behavior took place, it would say, "No data." Or if we didn't have a consequence in that drop-down, it would say, "No data." So our assistant principals downloaded all their campus-level data and they cross-referenced it to Power School to look at what did they enter incorrectly? What do they need to go back and clean up to make sure the data is accurate? For example, if, if you're behind or if you're out for a day or two and a behavior happens on Monday, but you don't log it in the system till Wednesday, the day of the week that shows up will show as Wednesday, but really the behavior happened on Monday unless you go back in and clean up that date. So examples like that of making sure we're, we're clean and we're consistent with our data, to your point, so that it's accurate and that we're all clear, that we have good clean data out as well.
Well, I guess my question would be then, what is documented? Then if you guys are saying it is documented, like, let's say for an example, student throws a water bottle across the room. That's different than a bullying case. Would that be documented?
We document any.
Can I just say anything really quick? I just want to clarify. I feel like we were on district reports and we were just, and we've.
We're still on MTSS.
Topic. It seems to me like we're more in the B, the bullying, and we skipped over career and technical education. So I just feel like we're getting a little bit off topic.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out in the line of questioning.
Okay, well, okay, I can take all these questions for after. My daughter did have a question off of a urinal statements, but.
Does it relate to?
But you guys were talking about Panorama and so, and then the documentation, like he said, trend data. So I was referring to his trend data.
And that's, that's the reason I'm asking. And maybe that we, we put on a future meeting, something that looks at the path of the data within the system, what that looks like, what is documented, where, how? Because that is slightly different than this, which is, this came specifically, it's, it's a different type of behavior modification.
Well, see, as, as, as the parents, as, as, although we don't, we, we don't have these systems to know how you guys are tracking and how it's put in, which system? Because we've actually been told the multiple different systems of how you guys are tracking it in and what case may be documented.
That on a future agenda topic? That way we just see what the path looks like and we can possibly even do a, what this, what the path should look like, what it is looking like, that type of thing. That might be helpful.
It's my understanding that we are, we, we did the district report and now we're getting way off topic of where we are in the agenda.
No, we're, we're discussing this, but it, it does blend into our other topics.
Okay, well, I, I, like I said, he mentioned trend data off of the Panorama, so that's what I was referring to.
Correct, yeah, but, but the other topics, if it, if the questions fit in there, it might be better in some of those others. Young lady, please join us. State your name, please.
Miley Hawkins. I just wanted to make a comment and ask a question about the Student Behavior Assessment Survey. I just wanted to speak on what one of the board members had said about students answering questions based on what the higher-ups would like to hear. And just from a personal experience as a high school student in those classroom settings when surveys are being held, I can tell you that no one seriously takes those to 100% of their ability. It's always, like you said, answered how it's expected of them and not truly how those students feel. And another question I had had was, what proof is being shown with the data? Like what is being done with the data from these surveys to prove that it's going to good use?
I can answer that, Miley. So the, the second question in particular, as far as how the data is used, the principals touched a bit on that. So I can tell you that, two ways. So first of all, at the district level, we do have a, at least one, if not multiple sessions depending on the audience. So if it's principals, we might do a session. We also might do a follow-up session with assistant principals. And so we will help them analyze that particular data and go through that data, find where are spots that are particularly strong, and then also to identify spots that need improvement at that particular school. And so then we can allocate time to principals to steal and share from one another. So Teresa might talk to Darlene because Darlene might have shown stronger results, let's say, in one area that Teresa, or vice versa. And so then they can share their ideas as far as what they do, what works at that particular school. And then they can, of course, make their own improvements. That's here. Then they can take that data and they go back to their school sites and they would have those same conversations with their staff. And so that would start with the school's leadership team. They would look at that data and then decide how do they want to communicate that data to the staff that are at the school. And then again, by strengths, weaknesses, if you will, more of repeating that same process with a new group of folks for that. So that's how the data is used. As far as your first comment, and I'm, I'm not sure if that was a question or comment. It sounded more like a comment as far as saying what folks would need to hear. I think, board members, you can see the results. We have room to improve on there. So the, the results do not show us that students are just marking the top answer. Does that make sense, Miley? Because we have, if you look at our results, there's plenty of room to grow in those particular categories.
And Miley, this is a study session, which means you got to ask a question, you have to give some information as well. Since you are a student and you said that we have issues, is there something that we could do to make it to where these, these surveys are, are something that students want to take? Is it the questions that are concerning or is it maybe a feedback session of what is important to you and you think would be important and would help you? Is that just an idea? Is there something that you could share with us that may help your fellow students? And what would make this a more meaningful tool?
I just personally think it's the way that these questions are worded. And just to mention on what one of the other speakers had said about the third-grade students not being able to understand the way these questions are being worded, I just feel as, maybe different surveys need to be made for different age ranges, as high schoolers may understand something that a third grader might not. So I just feel as if maybe these surveys and tests need to be worded and structured according to these age ranges and just accommodated to these children's and, and how they perform.
Thank you. I appreciate you providing that information. I, I think that, that will be very valuable for our team to be able to, to develop better questions and maybe make them a little easier to understand, but, you know.
Can I also respond? Maddie, thank you for sharing your experience of what that looked like when you took it from, from your personal lens. I want you to know that this was our third time giving the survey and we've been learning as we go. Dr. Smith and I, something that we did this year in the survey was, we provided ready-to-go slides for all teachers to pull up to create some continuity across the district and how the survey was given. Because you can imagine across 40 schools and thousands of kids and different teachers, we're going to have variability. So we really did this year during the coordinator training, tried to provide resources that you could pull up and you, every teacher could go through the same slides. And the first one was, you know, students, you can be honest. This is just to know about your school experience. And then everybody was using the same structure to hopefully help with some of that variability. So I appreciate you bringing that to us because maybe we start looking at what sites use those slides and what's, you know, what sites didn't. And we highly encourage the use of them going forward to decrease that variability that you talked about, so that it's a good survey experience whether you're in third grade, like Mrs. Bush talked about, or at the high school level, like you talked about, Maddie. So I, I, we appreciate that feedback and we are working on it, I promise.
Thank you, Miley.
Thank you.
Move on to our, the remainder of our study session. We are at the Career and Technical Education, Westmech Transportation, and it will most likely blend in with the bus transportation policy. Mr. McElrean, are you, are?
Mrs. Fisher, I would like to ask my questions because I'm kind of fading here. And then Mr. McElrean could give some feedback to that, if that would work.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Jim, are you, Mr. McElrean, are you fine with that? Her questions. Go ahead.
Okay. Really what I'm looking for is more of an exploratory team. We do have our extraordinary opportunities that are creating foundations for career choices through CTE. I'd like to see the access to the opportunities for students and transportation is normally the barrier to that. So if we could look at a few things, access to inter-district transportation, which would obviously be, be between the high schools and the programs that are at the different high schools, transportation to the Westmech programs at Williams, at, at the Williams Street area or building. And also, if possible, to think about transportation to the outlined destinations with the programs, such as the, the heavy diesel, anything that's not, you know, in a concentrated area is what I'm referring to there. I also wonder if you would look into how Westmech can provide support for these students to support them in their ability to access the program. And at this point in time, I, I'm not sure that you're going to have all these answers, but that's pretty much what I want to look into and how, at least, yeah, I think we can go for it, or this is how we would have to look for it, or we just can't in the next couple of months, or, or next, yeah, the next couple of months, because we only have a few meetings until December. And if that's something that you could do for me or for us, I would appreciate it. Mr. McElrean?
Ms. Hardaway, are you looking for any one specific campus? Two of these programs or all individual campuses?
No, when it's, when I say inter-district, we have, I'm looking at some kind of a little mini shuttle that would go from, amongst our five high schools to take our students to whichever the program is that is at the high school that they are not at. So needless to say, I do not have any of the logistics. I don't have the programming for that and I don't even know if we have the money. But I've been really looking at this for the last probably 12 years. And I'd like to either get a yes, a maybe, or a no, or a something. But I want to know where to start because if we can't do it by ourselves, I want to start making sure that Westmech is going to partner with us as we don't have the availability to have an EBIT on the west side.
Okay. Mr. McElrean, do you have a PowerPoint or anything, or do you want to just answer direct questions or?
I, I can't hear what you said.
I'm just asking, Mr. McElrean, how he wants to. Oh. No, he's got one up. He's got it up on the screen over there. Okay. Sorry, you were over there, I wasn't looking over there.
Okay, so just to clear up, because I really do have to, I, I have to get off the phone now. I just want to make sure that Ken's kind of clear on where I was going with it.
Okay. Me, me? All right. Vice President Fisher, members of the board, we do have some brief information, not having that, but I, I think realizing that was the direction. Just wanted to share some real quick information here. We do have a robust career in technical education. Sometimes we refer to CTE programs. These are the programs that we have at our campuses. I think there were 22 on that list, 28 on the Westmech off-site program list. And really, there are currently, I would say, three options. One option I don't think is utilized at all. The first option is the, the student makes their own arrangements to get to these programs. Many of these programs are for our upperclassmen, so, you know, 11th and 12th graders. And, and that does work for some students. It is a little bit of a logistical nightmare to get from one campus to another because all of our high schools have the same start and end time. So there typically would need to be a period that would be missed so that they could make the, the arrangements to get from one campus to another. The second option is for a student to identify with their counselor that they are having difficulty. And this is relatively a new option, just this year, if I'm not mistaken. Westmech wrote a grant and they partnered with Hop Skip Drive. And we currently have three of our high school students that are taking advantage of this option. They're listed here, two of them at Mountain Ridge, one at Berry Gold Water, two going to the, to the northeast campus, one going to the southwest campus, utilizing that grant program. It is a grant program that is set up for two years. We have looked, and I should give recognition because she's in the audience, Ms. Fitzpatrick helped provide a lot of this information. I'm not trying to blame her, I'm just trying to give her credit for compiling some of the data. The DICE Art School District actually received the first iteration of the same grant that Westmech received for this year. It's the A for Arizona Transportation Modernization Grant. We did also apply for that grant, but just for a reference for our special ed needs, but we were not awarded. So DICE Art is providing just PM program access. So DICE Art is providing just PM program access to the northwest campus only. Buckeye Union is providing AM campus support to the, only to the southwest campus. Again, to the campus in close proximity to their, to their attendance boundaries. And then with the passage of the bond that will be considered in November twenty-twenty-three, we are considering coming up with a dedicated white bus fleet option for CTE, to increase CTE accessibility. But we don't have all the logistics of that worked out. It is somewhat contingent on the bond passing. So that's really the information that we have to share. There there is an option for students. Unfortunately, the grant option is no longer available for for this semester because those, that information had to be completed much earlier. But I think there are additional opportunities as the grant is to cover a two-year period of time. And I'd be happy to answer her questions. Any additional questions, I should say, from the board?
No, I actually had talked with Dr. Finch a little bit about this today. I wasn't aware of the Hop Skip Jump Drive grant. That sounds like something that could be a possibility. I don't know how, I know that I've actually tried to use that program with my daughter before, but I don't think they get, you got to have it pretty planned in advance, but if we could get a regular route going, that might be something that we, especially if they have like a, a minivan or something that could hold more than, you know, a couple of students. And then just to clarify, yeah, the white, if 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 we got, if we were to get the the bond, the white bus, we would have five white buses, we were hoping, this is just, I know it's hypothetical, but five white buses and they, one would go to, would be at each high school and they would take them down to Westmech?
Vice President Fisher, Ms. Vincic, it really, again, the logistics haven't been worked out. There, the each school does have a number of white bus fleet now. So we might just augment that or supplement that with enough to make sure that everyone has enough at any one given time. Or it could be one dedicated. Again, that has not been yet yet determined.
Thank you.
So I guess my comment probably wouldn't necessarily fall under the the bus question that we're discussing, but I, I'm a firm supporter of CTE, as everyone in the room knows, and I think we do a huge disservice to this opportunity that we have with Westmech by not giving our children some more options. We have a lot of options, don't get me wrong. I've had this conversation with Ms. Fitzpatrick a lot and we do a lot for CTE. But I would like to see us as a district find ways to give more exposure at the lower grades to CTE options so that by the time they get to the grade where they have to leave campus, whether it's through district-sponsored buses or under their own power, that they're making a decision that's been well explored and thought out. So just a little plug there for some, some, some more CTE options in the district as we move forward.
Mr. McElrean, you, you said there were three options? Did I miss?
Vice President Fisher, yes. And I said the one option almost is not existent. It's the, it's the bus token option. So it would only be applicable for where public transit actually does solve the the need. And that option's been available for even longer than the the grant that Westmech just recently received. But to my knowledge, I don't think any student has taken advantage of that option.
Okay. I don't think any student knows that that option exists. I, I, I think that may be a problem that we need to promote, that type of an option, because I don't know. I I do have a couple more questions, though. As far as timing, you're talking about just adjustments within the schedules, correct? The students schedule themselves?
No.
When we talk about the the time that they need. So if they're self-transport, it doesn't really matter because they're going to go when it fits within their schedule. And so they'll have that break in their schedule here, drive there so that they could do their thing. So that, that, the timing is moot there. However, when we start talking about us busing them, it becomes a greater option, a greater concern. Do we have any type of a method to plan ride share? Like, we're going to have X amount of kids that are going to go. They could, you know, that type of thing where they're still self-transport, but they're ride share with each other. It'd be an insurance nightmare, but it potentially could happen.
Vice President Fisher, I would say that that's always an option, but it's directed by the student. So I don't know that we get involved. It would just be by word of mouth.
Well, we'd have to get involved because if we're letting them transport, it becomes a liability if they're, if we're letting them. Isn't that, wouldn't it fall similar to, I I would ask the trust, I guess, is what I would say. You got that one? Because that, that's, it's kind of like giving each other a ride to a game.
Yeah, students, if they're traveling to their campuses or if they're traveling to a Westmech campus, complete a travel form or on our program request form. On there, the parent indicates, I will transport the child themselves. And they'll provide the vehicle and insurance information. And then the parent will give permission for either their child to drive others or for their child to ride with others. So it is on the documentation that we collect and keep on file.
Awesome. That's, that's what I want to hear. And and so when we're doing that, are we helping assisting students in coordinating for for the CTA and those type of transports?
So the point of contact is the school counselor at their home campus. So we do rely on them having that one-on-one conversation when they communicate the registration information to the students, which usually happens in early spring. And then once they're at a Westmech campus in a program, they have the additional support of the Westmech counselor and career staff at that campus as well. And they communicate with each other should any changes in the student circumstances arise.
Okay. Is there additional supports we need to provide to help get that message out? One of the things that students, students have told me, and I know my daughter said the same thing, and this, obviously, she graduated, I don't know, she's twenty-eight, so it's been a while. But was, because I told her, I said, why did I just pay seventeen thousand dollars for you to go to beauty school when you could have gone your senior year? And it's like, well, I didn't even know they had that. So that, is there something we need to do to to increase getting that message out?
We've been working this year with Brian's team in communications to ramp up our communications, including the redesign of our website, including the video promotion and things that we've put out as well. But the counselors, we do have Westmech reps on each campus. And we do have presentations for CTE designed to be delivered as early as the seventh grade. So there is a prescribed curriculum for council delivery in seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, you know, and then for students in twelfth grade going on to post-secondary. So all of that is prescribed, but it is up to the campus and to the school counselors in, as to how they deliver it, whether it's in a one-on-one format, a small group format, a class format. It happens in different ways.
Since we're, since data seems to be a big topic, are are we keeping data on what schools are doing what? So that we could actually look for a trend and see, because then we could see what X campus that's doing great in that area? And then we could say, what are you doing to get all these kids to do this type and start, I mean?
It varies at different grade levels. Dr. Gallagher could probably speak to this a little bit more comprehensively. But we know that Deer Valley High School and Berry Goldwater do do the majority of one-on-one with students. Some of the larger schools due to numbers do more small groups or at least targeting the tenth grade, which is really a critical decision-making year for all five of our schools to do one-on-ones. And the counselors do, do document, document when they've met with the students through the log entries. I don't know if Dr. Gallagher wants to add to that.
Are they still doing the career assessment in that, at that tenth grade? Is that when they do that? What, what, what would be for me?
There are multiple assessments. Dr. McCusker and I have actually been discussing that this week as well with our IEP students. Through major clarity that the students complete personality assessments, career assessments, and then career exploration. And then the system that we've purchased tracks, tracks the data on each student to inform both the counselor and then the administration as we make decisions on programming going forward.
Okay, awesome. Now that we've got them wanting to go, as far as transportation goes, is there a potential to partner with industry within industry for transportation grants or 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 something of that nature? Has that been considered?
Vice President Fisher, the partner with like outside contractor to provide the service, I mean?
Well, okay, like here's a prime example. We know that City of Phoenix, City of Phoenix, City of Glendale, City of Scottsdale, City of any of them, my work, we're all short on welders. Find a welder. It's hard to find a welder. I would pay to transport a student for X amount of time for them to learn to weld if they'll give me a year's worth of their work after graduation. Things like that. Have we thought of any of the out-of-the-box? And if not, that type of partnership, is there a potential to use tax credit dollars? It's not extracurricular, so it wouldn't fall under any kind of tax credit dollar. But is there any other avenue that we could use?
To answer your question directly, no, we have not partnered with anybody specifically in the example that you shared or a similar example. And and I'm not sure how binding that would be in terms of the commitment for the year. I guess it would depend on the entity. But.
Do we have a fund, money could be donated into, like, like, you know, just gifts and donations? We have where gifts and donations, I could donate X amount because I want to feed teachers at such and such campus. I know that we have that ability to do that. Could we do that same thing so that we have a prepaid whatever amount? Even if it's just gifts and donations, could we do that?
The answer to that question is yes. We could accept the donation. I just don't know how binding it would be that the Westmech student, number one, would complete the course and number two, be obligated to whatever duration of time.
Right. And and even if we couldn't do that part, but at least we could do a partnership with, for gifts and donations because then it doesn't have the strings attached necessarily to completion of the student. Correct?
Correct, but the overarching challenge that we have with all of the transportation in the district is we just cannot find the bodies to be able to transport them.
Okay, so then that's a different issue. So it's not a matter of money. It's not a matter of getting the money. It's a matter of the people.
Correct.
Okay. What are the upsides and downfalls? Have, has it been considered the upsides and downfalls if we have gifts and donations specifically earmarked to transportation for CTE students, the use of Uber, Lyft, things of that nature?
Again, I don't, there could be a procurement concern that needs to be addressed. I'm not sure how we would, we'd have to go through the formal bid process if it got over the threshold. For us, that would be over ten thousand dollars. I assume that that could be reached rather quickly in a hundred-and-eighty-day school schedule. But that's not insurmountable. I mean, that's just a challenge of of time maybe to do the solicitation.
Okay.
I think another variable too is the, the cost of the private is usually double or triple what we do it for. So that's another variable to add to the equation as well.
That could be something that we consider as a backup plan for when we don't have the warm bodies, potentially.
Well, we can almost guarantee that.
Yeah, I know. I think I'm just trying to think out of the box or things that we can do, because I get Ms. Ordway's point. That, that point has been made for many, many years and it's been a long time coming where we talk about it. When I was in high school, it was great because Santa Fe High was here. You walked across and a Royal Vo-Tech was here. So I did my NA class, I did my accounting class, I did my English class. And so when we, it was a different model in that state and how they handled the CTE programs. But because we don't have them that way here, the transportation then becomes an issue, at least for the ones that are far further away, like welding, things of that nature. Are there any other potential grants for us to apply for?
I'm, I'm wondering, you said like thinking out of the box, because I know that there's a company called Grome Transportation and they go back and forth between like the airport and Flagstaff and back. And I'm wondering if maybe, I mean, they have a decent size van that could hold. And I don't know, I know this could end up being expensive. Obviously, there's a cost associated. But thinking about something like that, which could hold several students and have a regular schedule.
That's a good point. Or have we ever thought about doing a parental roam? Now, we'd still have to background check whatever parent's going to volunteer, but I know that we have a lot of people that are at home that potentially could run kids.
Yeah, they could do that today. Come work for us, Deer Valley Unified School District.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They don't necessarily want a full-time job, but.
Right.
I would, you know.
It needs to be run every day.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I ran a CTE center for twelve years.
Could we coordinate?
We had to, it was, took a ton of drivers and ton of time. Our schools were even further apart than this. Another variable too, and Dr. Gallagher can fill in for me, missing the point here. But also, we have instructional time that we have to, each kid has to have. And so the further away the school is from the access cuts the amount of minutes that they actually get, quote-unquote, education. And so that's another variable that's in the equation. Unfortunately, for like Boulder Creek, for, to come all the way down, it might even be, you know, a full or two periods a day they would miss.
So would it be more beneficial then for us to kind of survey and see what coursework would be meaningful to put on those types of campuses? We used to. I mean, we, we'll look at, look at Goldwater. We have a lot of CTE programs right there within Goldwater.
Actually, that's probably where we're headed. We're trying to do more CTE on our high school campuses because we're kind of leaving Westmech to do the really super expensive ones because A, resources, B, space, and three, number of kids to actually run it. So when you put multiple districts together, you can actually have enough for an HVAC, for example, or electrician or welder. But we might have not enough in our current system.
So if a, if a student from Boulder still has to, like, they just, they have their own transportation and they're, they're going down there. They are, between the time they're driving there and getting there, taking the class and being over, they probably missed, but they're getting school credit, they're getting credit for that, right, through the school? Or is it as a way that they have it set up so that maybe it's like at the end of the day?
That's correct. Yeah, they'll typically start at four o'clock for the, for the juniors. And then the seniors programs will start at one o'clock because the seniors typically only have a three or four-period day with us. And that, those classes at Westmech will count for, the students will earn one and a half credits in the fall, one and a half credits in the spring. So it's taking up three, three slots or three courses in a day.
So do you think there's enough programmatic issues that we could address to somewhat mitigate the need for transportation? Or is our data showing that, that there is specific programs that we could bring?
I, I think if the question is, can we expand programs at the schools to be able to meet the need? I think we're going to run into a different people problem. And that's going to be not transporting them. It's just finding the qualified instructors to be able to teach the courses and and potentially the space, depending on what campus you're talking about.
Okay, one final, just out of the box thought, because I haven't seen it done as an adult. Have we considered talking to the state and partnering with them in some of this? Because, I mean, if you think back to way back when, you were an apprentice for someone and that's how you learned your trade, you were an apprentice and you moved up through there. I know when I was a little girl and my mom was a computer programmer, while I was running in my socks and sliding on the shiny floors, she had high school students in her office working. She was teaching them and they were learning. It was part of a program that they put. Do they not have programs like that anymore?
So there's a large push. There was a press call. So there's a large push. There was a press conference this week with Superintendent Horn with the Arizona Economic Education Committee, Commission that was formed, which is folks from, from industry, primarily from Taiwan, from Switzerland, several folks across CTE in the education space at the Helios Foundation. So they are working to exponentially expand apprenticeships over the next several years in Arizona. So that is one initiative. And then I can't speak to the details, but I know the CTEs are also working with the state to be able to get the same funding for transportation as a typical K-12 or Union School District. I know that's one of, one of the initiatives they're working on, but Superintendent Spurgeon would have more of that detail.
Does, you have the list of the questions that Ann had? Do you think we had them or do, are you going to provide more data for her? Did you?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Did you get the list of what exactly Ann was referring to? I mean, I think we kind of discussed some of the questions, but if there's any specific questions that she has, if we could get those answered for her. But I personally, as a board member and a, and someone who actually has a CTE cert, I really do wish we would have a serious conversation on, on thinking out of the box and how we can make this really meaningful to our students. Not only just the transportation aspect, but you know, paying off my student loans, I realized I didn't even need student loans. I could have just gotten, I could have just gone to work for somebody with my, you know, taken an accounting class and gone from there and it would have found my way up to the same level. I could still be a CFO with learning my way up to it versus getting my education. And I still could have gotten my education later. So I just think it'd be a good topic. Is any other, before I go to the community, is there any large questions, comments?
I think also too, I've been in multiple states, worked in multiple states. I can honestly say because West Mac is close, we have a tremendous amount of students that are involved at CTE, probably more per capita than our neighbors because of its location. I don't, how many students do we currently have? You probably know all that off the top of your head.
We serve just over 6,000, including our satellites. We've got about 300 at West Mac campuses. You know, we know the majority of the seats in their programs are full. The majority of the seats in our programs are full as well, but we do serve close to 6,000 of our high school students in Deer Valley.
Have you compared what we do with, with West Mac versus us as far as cost? And same thing, I would actually, and I don't normally recommend Phoenix Union for, for those type of things, but they are very, very well versed in, in CTE, Police and Fire Academy, the, the Bioscience, some of those schools. All of Metro Tech started as a, at one point was. And one of the things that has made those schools specific is the standards that are within behavioral standards, which would go back to our other. I will tell you, you go to, you go to the Phoenix Fire Academy, you will no sooner park your car, you will have a cadet at your side and they will, you know, welcome you to the campus. How may I escort you? They will take you in. They're taught respect. They're taught all, they're, the program is, is all inclusive.
Yeah, they don't have the, we have the money issues. They have lots of dough. Don't they get, set, de-seg, about 40 million more than we do?
They get 56 million in desegregation funds, but that is not what funds, that's not what funds neither West Mac or neither Metro Tech or, because there's very specifics for those. So I mean, I would like to know kind of what those numbers are personally.
Yeah, and then one of the few districts, and Mr. McGloran will probably get to speak better to it, that that's not part of one of the 14 CTEs in Arizona.
Because they have it.
Yeah, but most are.
Yeah. So you had a question or comment on this topic?
Yeah, it's actually a little both. Joshua Hawkins again. It's more, it's about the transportation issue. Just hearing all the different things that we're thinking around. Have we or are we trying to possibly get partnerships with the city, like City of Glendale, City of Phoenix, like wherever can assist us, or partner with a nearby district that also attends West Mac? Try to pull our resources together, which would not only help them, but help us be able to kind of fill some of those gaps. So either the city or a nearby district option, or have we looked into that possibly?
Yeah, the, the relationship with nearby district, we are the closest to West Mac, so partnering with others wouldn't really help us, might help them. That, that might be helpful. But as far as the city goes, they, they don't have stops at our five high schools and/or a stop at West Mac. So they'd have to redesign their service, I guess, for us to be able to use it more efficiently as an option. Basically, they, we're kind of at the end of the road and it hasn't really developed up here as much.
But at some level, that might not be a bad idea, especially when you start thinking about, I mean, they have it for senior transportation where they send the mini buses. So it may be something, a conversation to start. And I know that also using, well, like I said, the bus transit is not very beneficial because it also doesn't go to that West Mac that's way out there in Surprise. So it's just a lack of infrastructure. But the mini buses might be an option. So that may be a good conversation to start as well. And that, but it would have to be, Phoenix would do within Phoenix. I don't know that they were cross lines. You'd have to have Glendale within Glendale, Phoenix within Phoenix.
That's one of our problems too. We're part of five zones.
Right.
That's a problem too.
So, but that is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'm not sure if we had everything that Ms. Orville wanted to discuss, but I do think it would be a good topic for a future agenda item as well. Maybe we all brainstorm and come up with something and, but real options that we can actually act on. Because we talk about it every year, but it would be nice to actually get our kids in these classes. No, seeing no other questions. Let's go ahead and move on to the backed up one right after is the bus transportation policy. Mr. Carver?
Yeah, so I appreciate the administration putting this piece together and sharing the policy with us. This came to my attention through an email that came to me from a community member earlier in the school year. As she was trying to figure out why, and I see now because of the policy, but she had a, I believe it was a sixth grade, seventh grader and a fifth grader, go to, goes to the same school, but they lived just inside of one boundary and just outside of another in order for both of them to ride the same bus in order to go to school. So that was a little bit of a hardship for her. I mean, she lives in a part of our district where we've discussed it a lot today. I hate using the term title because I feel that that kind of. It's the fact of the matter. And she's, she's one of those people in the community that we're trying to find a better way to service. And I see here that, you know, with the information that's been put together, that it would require us to have to add bus routes if we were to accommodate every household that has multiple children in the same school, but within that grade range that goes to that campus. I don't know that there's much that needs to be discussed about it. I do believe that this is a policy that I'd like for the board to take under consideration. For some revamping, I know that there's a cost associated with that and I try to be fiscally responsible taxpayers' money, but I think this is one of those expenses that the community spends good money in their property taxes so that their children can go to school. And I could feel the frustration in the young mother's voice when she was trying to explain, you know, she's got these two children that she has to figure out how to get one of them to school. So she just takes both of them to school in the heat of the summer and everything. I could really understand her frustration at what she perceived to be the unfairness of the rule. I understand the rule. But now that we've got so many of our campuses that go six, K through eight, and not very many of them that are seven and eight standalone anymore, just seems to me that logistically for the parents, it would be a good move. So that's, this is the information that I was looking for and that was what I wanted to point out to the administration and the board is I just think this is a policy that we should take a look at, see if we can work that in. I know, again, we're running into the same problem as we would with the minibus fleet. It's six more drivers that we don't have, Mr. Carver. How would you like for us to handle that? Six more buses that we potentially don't have. I get it, but I think that that's something that we should probably take a look at and see if it's too moving forward. It's obviously something we can't flip a switch on. I'm, I understand that, but that's all I've really got. Mrs. Fisher?
Ms. McCheck, did you have questions? I noticed that when you're, in the presentation you put together, you have surface distance. I thought it was measured as the crow flies. Like it's, isn't it measured that way? No, is it surface?
Vice President Fisher, no, we use a GIS mapping tool.
Okay.
To the closest entrance of the school.
Isn't it called the safe schools route, something like that, designed by the city?
The city develops the safe school routes.
That avoids some of the dangerous crossings.
Because they have jurisdiction of the streets to be able to determine where the school crosswalks will be placed.
Right. And, and protection from canals and getting over canals and over busy streets. But would you be able to provide data on what the cost would be for us to make adjustments to this policy? Because that is the concern is will we have enough space on a bus? Okay, so I mean, some of the buses and, and one of the complaints that we get sometimes is, I saw that bus drive by me and it was three quarters of the way empty. Couldn't you send a smaller one? Blah, blah, blah. And you, we're always going to hit those because we're going to always make someone mad. But is there a way for you to assess what, a realistic estimate of what the cost would be if we did make a change to where, say you do have a bus coming to House X and there's, they're both going to the same school, they're just different grades, one fits the criteria, one doesn't. Do you have a way to, to give us an idea of what that would cost?
Vice President Fisher, yes. So it, right now, because this could change at any given time, right? So of the 16 K schools, only 11, 11 of them have siblings that would be affected by this because many of them would have siblings in, in both different grade bands, right? One six and seven, eight. But maybe they don't live within that one and a half to one, one mile rate, distance. But it would, it would cost us six more routes. We would have to add six more routes for the, for the students. In some cases, it's just one student at one school. But in another case, it's 19 students. It, you know, it just really depends on the configuration of the school and the community that it serves to be, to know if there's a density of population within that one mile to one and a half mile distance from the campus. So it would, it would be six more drivers. And I think we're on day 53 or something of that of the school year. I don't think there's been a day that we haven't had to make some adjustments to just the routes that we currently serve, let alone try and cover six more routes. Just the nature of the business has been that there's been some consolidation of routes almost every day of this school year due to a shortage of drivers. So again, I don't know what's the, it's not a cost factor as much as the reality of being able to, to pull it off.
Is there a potential utilized public transit for any of those schools?
There, there might be for like, but, but the evolution of this is that we had K-6 schools and then we had seven, eight schools, we call them middle schools. I think those aren't technically, but we're not getting into that debate tonight. And then we started to build K-8 schools to the north. So most of the K-8 schools are north of Deer Valley Road. So.
There's no public transit.
So, you know, there's fewer options available the further north you get for public transit. And unfortunately, I, I wish there was a better way for us to determine the, if a student's going to ride or not. You know, we don't operate like the airline business that oversubscribes and then hopes that, you know, a certain percentage doesn't show up. We don't, but, but that's, there's some reality to that. If we move to that, it wouldn't be as many, right? So it would be four instead of six, some, some number like that. But there's still, even at four, if, we're still not covering the routes we have and then we're going to add four more. I just don't know that we, we would be creating expectations that we wouldn't be able to deliver on under the current environment. And, and so there's more than one way to fix this, you know, just, you know, so that we're having this conversation in a public setting, because we've had this conversation as well, is you could increase the distance for the first through sixth grade students to the mile and a half, and then it would be consistent. And.
They get to both walk together is what you're saying?
And.
Two parents would kill us. They would skin us alive.
I mean, that's, and realistically, when we've had that conversation, nobody wants to go that direction. And I understand why. I mean, we're, I'm not trying to suggest that. I'm just trying to say that that has in, in some cases, the reality sets in that, okay, well, let's not harm the first through sixth grade students because the distances are different. Let's try and figure out what we can do for the seventh and eighth grade students differently maybe.
Okay. This will come back, I'm sure. It's come back every year repeatedly.
And I, I think one, one of the lessons that we have learned, we need to do a better job. We know who these students are. So I think we need to do a better job, just, you know, in full disclosure here, of notifying those parents well in advance. Because if we know that they're within this range in this band and they're not going to be eligible to ride, we should give them advanced notice, maybe even before the end of the school year so that they're well prepared for, for, for this. Because too many of them, they learn about it at the, at the worst possible time, right? It's going to be over 100 degrees. It's the start of school. There's a lot of stress involved. And even though we post information, it's just not, I, I think we can reach out to them. We have the tools to be able to reach out to these people individually, so.
Okay. I think that would be good. And if there's any type of social services supports that we could provide, if they fall within the criteria, that may be helpful as well. And I don't know if there is or isn't, but.
Yeah, this would exclude, like if a student was on a 504 plan and needed transportation, then we would be obligated to, to, to provide that transportation. Obviously, for special education, it's a completely different criteria for eligibility to, to ride the bus.
Right. And we don't want kids all of a sudden to all new 504 plans because that's generally a behavioral concern. We do not want to encourage parents to have their kids act up to get onto 504 so they could catch a bus. It's not a good suggestion. But, okay. Anything else, Mr. Carver? Okay. Seeing no other questions, let's move on to bullying. Now, bullying and the special education procedures. I'm not sure where special education staff, oh, that came from someone else. I'm not really sure that those two are intended to be separate topics. And I'm going to explain to you why. I did provide this to the board members and, and Ms. Taylor did upload it to.
Bullying?
She did upload it under the special education item. Okay. The, the reason I put these two on the agenda, I mean, there's student bullying and I do believe that we need to address that. I am concerned with some of the student bullying. We're getting a lot of that. I've had multiple parents contact me regarding bullying issues regarding our processes. And I do think that we're going to have to address that, but that's going to also come with the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and looking at some of those changes that are necessary. But I'm going to go ahead and read this. This is a group of teachers that had asked to meet with me. And when I was not quite able to meet with them, they, they wrote some of their concerns. They, and then the ones at the bottom, they just sent me other messages. I asked permission first if I could share this, if I were to redact out things that would reveal who they are. And that's why when you see the red letters, that's words that I added for the sole purpose of making the sentence somewhat make sense. The rest is 100% written by the teachers. And then the, the very far bottom is two other concerns that came by another method. And then the very far bottom is two other concerns that came by another method.
Can you help me understand a little bit? Is it, is it teachers talking about, it's not happening at my school, but I've heard it's happening at other schools? Is that what I'm reading?
Now, there, this is a group of teachers, they're at various schools. And so it is happening at theirs, they are familiar with other campuses as well, but they said that it, and that's why I brought it to this type of a study session, they said it was predominant across the district. It wasn't just, this school's having an issue, the rest of them are all great. It wasn't that kind of a conversation, because generally.
We have 42 schools. You're saying they know about all 42? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not going to say they know about all 42. I'm going to tell you, this is a concern that was brought by them.
Okay. Because, yeah, as I read it, it seems like they're saying, at my school, it's fine, but I've heard at Sierra Verde.
Well, I changed it to my school, and all that's blacked out is a list of schools. So, because I don't think we need to call out people by their names or by their school, necessarily. So this is what, how it reads, it says, "As a whole, the special education program along with the Gen Ed teachers at DVUSD has much room for improvement."
Are you going to read the whole thing?
Yeah. "Demoralizing and ostracizing students on IEPs is in many places, not providing services or skating by with services, or writing IEPs that don't have parent services, even though the student needs parent support, because there is, there is not enough parents. Or not allowing students to pull out of classes because there's no room, and Gen Ed teachers harassing, demoralizing, berating special ed students exists in a large scale. I've seen it, I've seen so much. I am a special education teacher, my school is better than most, I have direct knowledge of other schools." That's all the blacked out was the names of various schools. I'm not sure why I left the "on IEP" Sierra Verde, because I was just trying to take out all of that. There's, I'd say, family members having both, both had students in IEPs have taught in various schools in DVUSD. Individuals at a school are on the verge of quitting. So I'm just going to, I'm going to just kind of summarize some of it. Because of the combative nature of some of the Gen Ed teachers. So this is really more, it's not just students, this is more of, the concern was that there's a bullying between our Gen Ed teachers and our special needs teachers. And this isn't the first time I've heard this. I've heard this.
Yeah, if we could have the buildings, that would really help a ton.
Well.
Because we have 42 schools, so if we could narrow it down to where the issues are, that would be helpful.
The problem is, is the retaliation. The retaliation.
But we can't help if we don't know where to help.
Well, we can though, by having the supports within the school, by having those trainings with our teachers. Like I said earlier, when you have a teacher who, this is not something I can deal with, respecting that teacher enough to say, I get it, we're going to put these supports in at that time. And whether that's parent support, or additional teachers, or teen teachers, or things of that nature. But we have to start empowering our teachers to be able to say, look, I can't handle this kid. I can guarantee you today that there were teachers when my son was little, and they did share with me, I can't handle him right now, I don't know what to do. And I gave him strategies, this is what you need to do, and if he doesn't fit in your class, we need to move him out. And we did move him out of some classes. So I'll let you read the whole thing, and it's been posted up, so we can look at that. Because I don't want this to become just a reading thing. I think we really need to address some of the bullying. It's not just kids. We have, I have, I'm sure all of the board has, received a lot of emails lately about bullying, about students being bullied by other students, about bullies being bullied by teachers, teachers bullied by administrators, administrators bullied by higher-level administrators. And the atmosphere and how we're going to address it, and my, and I don't know, I'm asking you to help me brainstorm, or the board, help me brainstorm something that we can do. Is it something that we need to put in? Because I will tell you, I had a conversation with a student who lived in my neighborhood back in the day when my daughter was pushed to the point of suicide, an attempt. This student also was in that same group of kids that was pushed. And when we were talking about some of these topics, she sent me a video, and I was this close to posting it somewhere, because I think people need to read it and they need to see it. Because they need to see the reality of what's happening in our schools, and I'm not blaming Deer Valley. Because this is not a Deer Valley problem. It is a Deer Valley problem, however, addressing some of it perhaps. But this is a nationwide problem, where people are, people have become nasty all the way around. And even when they don't think they are, they go, oh, I'm not the nasty one, I'm not the mean one. They're mean, and I have six people that I have gathered and gossiped about them with to prove that they're mean, or they're the problem. And, but we're, this is happening in our schools. This is happening to our teachers. When you have a teacher who has a group of teachers who ostracizes them, this becomes a systemic problem, a system. You know, a couple of years ago, I really requested that people read, real leaders aren't bullies. And I know everybody thought that was my targeting Finch, and it's not. What he does in his life, what happens in mine, eventually our ways apart, and whatever happens, happens. But our teachers can't keep getting bullied. We have to help them somehow. And is that policy, is that an HR policy we need to address? What do we need to do to help make these changes?
I can tell you, we don't tolerate it. So as soon as it's reported, we have an employee assistance program as well, we just had it today.
But on some level, it's starting up here.
Ms. Mopit in HR gets calls from employees all the time about, hey, we need to deal with this, and then we set up a individual plan to deal with it. And that, that's why we need information. You can't just talk about it in general, because in general, we don't have, this, our data doesn't say that people don't like working here.
See, that's, and that's part of the problem.
No longer have a quorum of the board.
Well, that's true. We lost our quorum.
Last, Stephanie and Ann has disconnected. We no longer have a quorum to hold this meeting.
That is true.
So, so if the public understands, because Ms. Simicek chose to walk out without addressing the rest of this board meeting, we are going to have to call it, which means we will not address bullying or any of the other topics.
Put it in.
This is, this is the power of three. If you do not have three, you cannot have a meeting.
So it's, a meeting adjourned?
By manipulation, they have adjourned because they don't want to talk about these topics.
Meeting adjourned.
So we're going to have to adjourn.
Okay.
That was a very bad move, by the way.